Welcome, everyone. I call the March 15th, 2022 regular city council meeting to order. I now invite Councilmember Doer to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Please, everyone else mute your microphones and turn off your videos while we display the banner, and we'll give everybody a moment to do that.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Doer. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 2028 regarding open public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the City Clerk's office via link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to meet their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our phone in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing so everyone can follow along. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please stay here when the city clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Orin.
Here.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Alderks.
Here.
Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Manki.
Yeah.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor O'Kabra.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting ads and Ds, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council, please use the raised hand feature in Zoom or your yellow card when you wish to speak, and I will call on you. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and remember to mute your mic when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations, reports, and briefings with public engagement opportunities. The City Hall lobby is reopening as COVID restrictions lift. The City Hall lobby is now open to in-person service Tuesday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Service Monday and Friday is appointment only. We have the Bothell Way Improvements Community Workshop #2 coming up. We're planning improvements to make Bothell Way safer. Share your thoughts during our second online workshop on Wednesday, March 23rd at 7:00 p.m. Learn more at bothellwa.gov/bww. All right. And we have a proclamation. We have a couple of proclamations tonight. The first one showing support for Ukraine. Whereas on February 23rd, Russian President Vladimir Putin sent troops to invade the sovereign nation of Ukraine in an unprovoked and deeply disturbing attack. And whereas Washington State is home to over 70,000 Ukrainian Americans and is one of the six states with the highest number of Ukrainian immigrants. And whereas Americans with Ukrainian heritage living in our state and in Bothell have enriched our community, have been part of our cultural fabric for decades, making significant contributions to the city at large. And whereas Ukraine, the country, and its people are enduring threats to their safety and security. And whereas our thoughts are with the Ukrainian people as they endure this violence and with the Russian people standing against it. And whereas Bothell is home to displaced people, refugees, and survivors from various geopolitical conflicts across generations who are re-experiencing the trauma of war and invasion and who call on Americans to stand for self-determination and autonomy for all nations of the earth, including the people of Ukraine. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, do hereby proclaim that the city of Bothell stands with our Ukrainian community and encourage all residents to join me in solidarity with the Ukrainian community at home and abroad. The city is committed to and believes in the peaceful dignity, equality, and civil rights of all people. Clerk, do we have anybody here to accept the proclamation?
We do not.
Do not. All right. Next up, we have a proclamation for developmental disabilities awareness month.
Give us just a second. It will slow today.
Councilmember Alderks.
Do we need a motion to approve?
Of the proclamation?
The proclamation, yeah.
Nope.
Okay.
We do not.
Thank you.
Whereas on February 26th, 1987, President Ronald Reagan officially proclaimed March National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, calling for understanding, encouragement, and opportunities to help persons with disabilities lead productive and fulfilling lives. And whereas we recognize the many accomplishments and contributions of people with a developmental disability who are of all racial, ethnic, educational, social, and economic backgrounds and are all valued members of society. And whereas we value what is important to people with disabilities and their families and recognize the intersectionality of the disability experience in our lives and the role it has in our rich diversity. And whereas we acknowledge there are systemic barriers that reduce the likelihood of those with disabilities enjoying equitable experiences and living independent, productive lives within their communities. And whereas we strive to increase awareness and the openness to learn to change the attitudes and beliefs about the abilities of individuals. And whereas we recognize that equitable experiences and full inclusion is a matter of social justice and a shared responsibility of everyone to reject segregated services and create welcoming and supporting environments, policies, and systems for all. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in the city of Bothell and promote both the expectations and opportunities for individuals with developmental disabilities to participate fully in our community, including access to integrated employment, education, housing, and civic engagement. And I believe we have Samantha Yetman and Robert Miller to accept.
Yes, we do. Mayor Thompson, and they are here. I'm having a little bit. It's really slow today, so hopefully they're on. If not, they're walking the hall. And also, we have their parents, Marjorie Yetman.
Okay.
And I believe Robert Miller's mother's with us as well. So if you all would like to unmute your cameras and say a few words, you're more than welcome to.
Hi, Samantha.
Hi. Thank you for having us, Mayor Thompson and council. My name is Samantha Yetman. I have been with North Shore Wranglers Inclusion Program for 11 years. The inclusion program is important because it has helped myself and others with developmental disabilities be part of our community. Our annual 5K helps us bring together, bring us together with the larger community, and we would love to have all of you join us. For more information, you can go to bothell5k.org.
Thank you so much. All right. I don't see anybody else here to co-accept that. Robert? Hello?
Robert is having a hard time connecting.
Well, that is unfortunate. Robert, are you there?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Oh, oh. Unfortunately, we can't really hear Robert. I can hear that he's speaking, but I can't make anything out. Robert, thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. Next up, we have a proclamation for Women's History Month. Deputy Mayor.
Sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to get that website again for the 5K. I didn't quite catch it.
Oh, sure. That's bothell5k.org.
Oh, 5K. Oh, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Whereas the first ever Women's History Week was celebrated in 1978, and March 8th International Women's Day was chosen as the focal point of the observance. And whereas in 1980, President Carter declared the week of March 8th National Women's History Week, and seven years later, in 1987, Congress declared March as National Women's History Month in perpetuity. And whereas on November 7th, 1972, Washington voters approved Article 16 to the state constitution, which provides that legal rights and responsibilities shall not be denied or abridged on account of sex. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and often unrecorded ways. And whereas women play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life, constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working both inside and outside of the home, historically providing the majority of the volunteer labor force, establishing many of the early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation and courageously serving our country in all branches of military. And whereas women served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, the peace movement, and others, all which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, women have been constantly or consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Women's History Month in the city of Bothell and join in honoring and celebrating all women by recognizing their perseverance, contributions, and vitalness to our community and our country. And it looks like we've got Judge Rosano here to accept. Hi, Judge.
Hi. Yes, you're right. Thank you, Mayor Thompson and councilmembers for inviting me to be here to accept. I'm actually coming to you from my vacation because this is an important thing to me, and I wanted to be able to be here to accept. So as the great-great-granddaughter of Susan Campbell-Wooden, known for her pivotal role in founding Woodenville and also coming from Bothell, originating from Bothell, it is a privilege and an honor for me to accept this proclamation from the city. As you, I have been lucky in my lifetime to have been mentored by a number of very powerful women. And as you said, this is History Month, and we've been underrepresented. I'm going to give a quick history lesson. My grandmother and my great aunt both graduated from the University of Washington Law School in 1923 and 1924. My grandmother started her business out of her home because she married and had children, and so was not expected to go to work. But she did practice out of her home. Her younger sister, my great aunt, was a Department of Justice attorney back in Washington, DC. She served under the, actually, second. I thought it was the first, Assistant Attorney General. And I have her name down here, Mabel Walker Wilderbrand, who was the Assistant U.S. City Attorney in 1921 to 29. My great aunt worked with her during her entire tenure. Or not her entire tenure. Sorry. She went there in 1924 and then to the end of her tenure. But I will say that my great aunt and my grandmother to some degree, but my great aunt in particular inspired me to become a lawyer. And she was, to my knowledge, the first woman lawyer in our family. I'm the first woman judge in our family. So but going to firsts, I think it is important to acknowledge those women in my career path that were the first. So the first attorney in the United States to have graduated law school and to have passed the bar was Annabella Mansfield in 1869. The first Assistant U.S. Attorney was Annette Adams in 1920. She resigned, and my aunt's boss took over. The first, but the first actual U.S. Attorney General wasn't until Janet Reno in 1993. More specific to me, the first female judicial officer was Esther Morris in 1820. The first African-American female lawyer was Charlotte Ray in 1872. The first Native American female lawyer was, I think it's Lida Conley, in 1902. Jane Boland became the first African-American judge in 1939. And Belva Ann Lockwood was the first female attorney to argue to the United States Supreme Court in 1880. So but with all of that, the first United States Supreme Court Justice, first female Supreme Court Justice, didn't happen until 1981 with Sandra Day O'Connor, which happened to be the year that Washington State had the first female Supreme Court Justice in Carolyn Dimmerck. She beat out Sandra Day by a few weeks, so she was actually considered the leader in getting onto that Supreme Court position to being a justice, even if it was Washington and not the U.S. So I could go on with some more firsts because if you look it up, there are a number of firsts. What really impresses me is that there have been women actively participating in the legal community. I believe the first argument ever made by a woman in a lawyer-type representation, she was not a lawyer, and it wasn't, and obviously before we were founded, was in 1660, I want to say 1668, during some of those lovely trials that we used to have back in Boston area. So I think that that's everything that I want to say, having given my little history lesson. I guess the other thing is, is that I appreciate the fact that I have the position of judge in the city of Bothell as a female. I followed a female judge in the city of Bothell. Bothell is very progressive in that area, but I also want to point out that it's not as novel as it sounds, given the history that we've had. So thank you very much.
Judge, thank you so much for coming here from your vacation. Please enjoy the rest of it, and don't worry about these meetings anymore. But thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Have a great day, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Shannon Kelly Ray to give us a presentation on our DEI program.
Thank you so much, Mayor Thompson and councilmembers. And I want to first say that to talk about the city of Bothell's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Initiative during what is Women's History Month and also when we can recognize diversity awareness, whether that's physical difference, sensory, or neurological difference. I think that it's incredible that we have this conversation. You know, I am the great-great-granddaughter of what would now be called enslaved Africans, enslaved African-Americans. And so, you know, I feel like during this time of month especially, and as we come off of the heels of Black History Month, that, you know, I want to make sure that the community, both the city of Bothell, everyone is aware that these histories aren't just women's history or Black history or recognitions for people with disabilities or difference. This is American history, and that's a story that is constantly being written. And the fact that we can stand in solidarity with the people of the Ukraine and those people in the former Soviet Union that is now Russia, who also, many of whom stand against what is happening across our community. I want to make sure that we're all grounded in the fact that all of us today are fighting to make sure that the thing that we enjoy, that our freedoms should be enjoyed, the access and opportunity that we enjoy should be enjoyed by everyone. There is not a limited resource when it comes to freedom, civil rights, equity, and justice, and it's something that we should hope to replicate across the community. And with that, I'm going to just share my screen so that I can give you an update on where we are in terms of progress for the city of Bothell. There we go. So today's council update speaks specifically to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Assessment that the city is undergoing, and I wanted to present our progress to date. So first, the city has seated and selected and seated the Diversity Advisory Committee. That committee is representing the diversity of the community of the city of Bothell. They function as a community-based advisory group to share their insights, perspectives, and offer recommendations to the DEI project team, to the consultant, and that would be me, on the DEI initiative, and the city of Bothell leaders. So as we move forward to do the work that is the assessment to identify what are our strengths and our weaknesses and growth opportunities for the city of Bothell in terms of development and forward progress so that we can build an actionable, tangible, measurable result in terms of strategies for the city, both inward and outwardly facing. I like to say, build nothing for them without them. And that means that we cannot do this great work on behalf of the community without the community's participation. And having Diversity Advisory Committee allows for community members to be seated and serve as collaborative partners to help discuss, decide, and design that progress and the work that we're doing. There's also the Bothell Dive-In Team that is made up of city of Bothell staff people. They are the inward-facing advisory body to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion work that is happening. They also are collaborative partners that have already been leveraged to offer insights on the progress of our organizational equity assessment and process. And so I'll cover some of the things that we've completed along this journey, some of which have already been presented to the dive-in team for their insights. And they will, those things will also be presented to the Diversity Advisory Committee of the community to weigh in. We've completed one-on-one leadership interviews for executive insights, and all of you I've talked to or someone on my team has talked to. So we did one-on-one leadership interviews so that we could learn from folks on the city council and the city manager's office and the director's team to get a good understanding of where they believe the city of Bothell is today in terms of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion journey and where they think things ought to go. We've completed a detailed analysis of the city of Bothell's community climate survey. In the summer of 2020, 507 community members completed a survey to talk about their feelings and experiences within the city of Bothell. This was immediately following the murder of George Floyd by the Minneapolis police, and we got some pretty great insights. So we did a deeper analysis of that data where we did an analysis of groups and subpopulations within the 507 members so we could isolate responses by race, by age, by income level, language at home, by neighborhood. So we got a pretty good understanding of some of the things that are happening in terms of strengths and opportunities across the community. We're looking forward to presenting that to you. We've completed the organizational review of policies, processes, and procedures. We used an international standard of diversity and inclusion best practices to look at some documents that were shared with us by the city of Bothell and offered both strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and then recommendations. And so that has been completed. We've also completed Diversity Equity and Inclusion training for city council, for city council members, executive leadership, the core equity team, and managers in key departments that happened in the summer of 2021. So we have three council members that are newly elected. They didn't have the benefit of participating in the training, but we certainly made sure that for the one-on-one interviews, we've interviewed council members prior to this last fall's election. But we also included the three new council members as well so that we would have representational voice from the previous council as it was seated and then today's council. We wanted to make sure we had those insights. And so that is kind of where we are in terms of what has been happening thus far. So a lot has been happening in terms of what we've been doing. What are some of the next steps, things that we'd like to either schedule or things that are currently underway? I want to, I will be working with Becky Range with the city manager's office to schedule a city council study session to present the assessment results and recommendations that we have to date. So all of the elements of the organizational equity assessment, we'd like to present in parts over the next couple of months to council to allow for a deeper dive into what the findings have been and the recommendations that may impact your decision-making, I'm sure. My team is doing community outreach and engagement so that we can be able to sit down and have deeper conversations with the community for people who either live, work, or play in the city of Bothell. We're reaching out to both individuals, but especially community partners and community groups who have deep-reach relationships, or we're hoping to build relationships within the city of Bothell in terms of doing this work. We want to be able to make sure that every voice that can be brought to the table and included in the conversation to talk about experience, insight, and opportunity in the city is able to come to the table. We're also preparing to do a staff workplace culture survey or staff DEI survey as well as staff focus groups. So that is what we're doing in the near term. More will happen beyond those steps, but that's about where we are positionally in terms of the process right now. So I wanted to stop and allow for questions and dialogue with the council. I'll also invite Assistant City Manager Becky Range to join me to answer questions that you may have.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shannon, for this. Really good presentation, and I really like this picture you have over here. I'm not biased. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. One, you mentioned the Summer 2020 Survey of the Community. So Summer 2020, as you know, and everybody knows, was, everybody was hot, you know? Two years later, things have cooled down quite a bit. Do you think survey results would be different today than they were two years ago?
I think that there would be, there would be elements of the survey that would be different. A lot has happened over the course of the last two years. Of course, at the point that we got to the summer of 2020, May of 2020 happened. But you also had the events of March of 2020 that happened, and that was the introduction of the COVID-19 pandemic. And so people's feelings have, of course, shifted as a result of that experience, especially when it comes to issues like mandates around wearing of masks and having to conform to something like that. Some people feel like that's an equity issue and have made that known. Some people have asked for accommodations for religious and other exclusions and have very strong feelings around that, and that would impact a community's culture survey in terms of the dynamic of race and injustice. You know, people's feelings sometimes cool over the course of two years, but now you also have people across King, Snohomish, and especially Skagit and Watkin counties where we have a significantly high population of people of Russian and Ukraine descent. And so their feelings in terms of the world around us and the community may shift. And so, yeah, they're, in terms of feeling safe, what matters most to people, sometimes trigger events can cause very wide varying responses.
So the follow-up question, do you think it's worth conducting another survey just to look at the differences in what happened between 2020 and 2022?
That was something that we did talk about that was on the table. That's something that we're still deciding right now. Up until now, it was felt that we wouldn't need to do a survey, but having the community advisory body, the DEI Advisory Committee seated, you know, they may advise something different. So we want to be able to take insights from the council, from the city manager's office, and of course, the community advisory committee.
That sounds good. Thank you. One thing that I see in the, or I don't see in the next steps is timelines. And I did ask the city manager about this. Two years ago, when the budget for this, well, this program was created, was in the hopes to hire somebody closer to full-time this time, by this, you know, by this year. And I don't see it over here, so can you give us an update on timeline for these next steps as well as how, when are we thinking of making more full-time roles that are heavily focused?
Well, I'll tell you that in two answers. Number one, in terms of timeline of this project, we should be wrapping up our work in the late spring. So you should have recommendations. recommendations, um, uh, in front of the council in the month of May or month of June. Um, and then to, to whether or not there is a, there's the necessity for a full-time position, we'll find that out at the end of the process. So we'll look at both the strengths and opportunities. Uh, we'll look at existing infrastructure. We'll look at budget, and part of the recommendation may be that we come to council and, and offer the recommendation that you allocate funding to fund, um, uh, either one or more positions. Um, I can tell you even preliminarily, the city of Bothell doesn't have a dedicated person to do, uh, especially DEI-related outreach and engagement, to build relationships that are, uh, that are, uh, long-term and permanent with the city, and to do this work is done kind of ad hoc. The, the outreach and engagement specialist is doing the work for the city right now is one of my staff members that, that is, uh, full-time. And so, um, I could tell you now that one of the things that you will, you will expect to see from me in terms of recommendation is, is, is at least that position. So, um, uh, we'll offer recommendations when, when, uh, more is learned.
Okay, cool. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. So, oh, just to confirm, in around May, June, I don't know, we're gonna have a study session to talk about, discuss the results and, and come up with the next steps then?
Yep. So we'll be asking for a study session before that time because I want to make sure that, uh, we can walk you through what the, uh, assessment findings are to date, and the, the other things that we will learn as part of this process. We'll also be working as part of next steps beyond what you see there, uh, with the many different departments to do planning and strategy, to build an equity plan where we can, uh, deliver, uh, some of those, uh, objectives or key results, or specifically SMART goals, uh, across, uh, every city department so that we can, uh, have some, uh, some goal, which you know, measure doesn't matter. And so we want to have some strategies, uh, assigned to, uh, to data.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
Oh, oh, Councilmember McNeil.
Sorry, I was trying to find my raised hand, but it was taking me a minute there. Uh, Shannon, thank you for the presentation. Uh, as always, it's good to see you, and uh, thank you for the work that you provide, not only to our community but around the region. I know you have a hand in a lot of work that's happening around the region. Uh, we're all better for it. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about, we're going through, um, city manager hiring process and boards and commissions. Those are some of the upfront things that we're, we're working through right now as a council. Um, in this process, will we have, uh, the ability to be able to have our voice heard on the, some of the questions and things that we need to ask, or things that we need to be looking at, or biases that we may come with when we're evaluating candidates, uh, for not only city manager but boards and commissions?
Thank you so much for that question, Councilmember McNeil. Um, I've been working with Becky Range with the city manager's office, and we've provided a tool to council that can also be leveraged for boards and commissions that essentially allows for individual and collective self-reflection, where with that tool, you ask yourself some very specific and dedicated questions regarding the impact of your decision-making, uh, both short-term and long-term, uh, voices that are left, uh, away from the table. For example, um, sometimes with a, a, a city body or a leadership group, um, you think of the whole of the community of Bothell, and oftentimes, when you look at the data, uh, around people who are impacted by your decision-making, sometimes members of that body will say, well, do we really have to decide to do this thing that we're gonna do, especially when, when what we're gonna decide really only impacts a really small number of people? And, and does it really matter because it's such a small group of people? And what I'll tell you is, when you look at marginalization across any community, the folks that are the least of these, um, I, you know, the best practice in terms of DEI and inclusion and justice is that there is no group that is too small that, that you can, uh, lift the voices, that you can raise awareness, and that you can center. And if disparity is happening anywhere in the community, it may as well happen everywhere in the community. And so using the tool that I suggest, um, one of the questions is, have we not given more weight or full weight to the experiences of what may representationally be the few to the, because it's more expedient for the people that are in the majority, in the, in the dominant, and that could be people that are physically abled, people that are younger, people that have more money, people that are Caucasian, non-Hispanic, people that are English speakers. And so if the goal is to create a system that works for everyone, you can't minimize and diminish the experiences of the few. Um, another example of how you might put that into practice, I've been, you know, I follow the local news and, and I follow council proceedings, and, and I know that there's a lot of chatter in the community right now regarding, uh, the downtown and, and accessibility and, and transit. And, you know, I look at data and I look at what is statistically relevant, and I don't think that there's a such thing as to be statistically irrelevant, to statistically not significant enough to count. And I know that there was a, a survey done with one of the local businesses downtown, representing the voice of a small part of the population. But then, you know, if you use the tool that I have, you have to ask yourself, you know, build nothing for them without them. Has the survey represented all of the businesses, uh, in the downtown corridor? Has that survey represented, uh, the, the community beyond the downtown corridor? The city of Bothell is people who live in Bothell, who work in Bothell, but may not live in Bothell, but come to the city. And I've watched the city of Bothell as one of the members of the community of Bothell over more than the last fifteen years grow. Bothell today is very different than it was. When I first moved to Bothell, I knew that I was in Mayberry when I saw the folding chairs aligning Main Street. I leverage businesses there. I've visited many of the restaurants there and enjoy visiting the area. But to use the tool that I provided, you would have to ask yourself, what are all of the sources of, of input and insight and experience that we get? Have we heard from everybody that we need to? Are we limiting and minimizing voices? Are we thinking about the totality of the people that make up the community of Bothell? Those are some of the questions that you have to ask so that it isn't singularly focused on one business or one demographic or one group, but all of those people that would enjoy access, opportunity, and opportunity of Bothell, especially as Bothell becomes less affordable. So if you want to keep, uh, keep the doors open to access to Bothell, knowing that new construction now, when I moved to Bothell, that the big fancy houses were $400,000. Now those houses are 1.2 to 1.5 million. If you want to keep the door open, you have to, to make sure that people can leverage transit, and people that leverage transit aren't just people that are low-income. I know that one of the things that has mattered for the city of Bothell has been to be green, to be eco and environmentally friendly. And part of the goal of light rail and transit is to get people off of what people called that express lane on the 405, which was the millionaire highway. If that's one of the ways that people can access the community of Bothell and everything that it represents in its richness, some of those people aren't poor. They just want to get off of the freeway and, and keep the region green. So those are some of the things that a tool like that would, uh, would afford you the ability to do. Engage in a more deep and, and insightful, but, uh, uh, more inclusive conversation.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. And I, I remember some of those insights when we first met and been working together for quite some time, um, even meeting back and working with the school district. And, and, and hearing you speak and talk the same thing over and over again has led me to ask those tough questions and to look at things through different lenses and to appreciate other people's lenses in which they look at things, um, and their needs and, and things that they need to have within their lives. And so I, I think, you know, the work that you're doing here is amazing. I look forward to continuing that work, and I look forward to learning more. Um, as somebody who has lived experiences, um, I'm, I've never learned it all yet. I don't believe that, um, I have all the answers yet, uh, but I believe that having gone through this training, uh, hopefully with this council, uh, with the city, will all help us at the end become better for this training. Uh, but again, we're gonna need to continue to work together. We're gonna continue to need to listen to one another, and we're gonna continue to need to let each other have a voice at the table to listen to one another. So again, thank you so much for your work, again, for the, for not only our community but the region. Uh, I look forward to working with you for many, many years on this.
Thank you so much.
Councilmembers Orns.
Well, just a quick question, uh, prefacing it with the observation is we're, we're getting ready to decide our boards and commission members. And I understand, you know, the reality is, life is busy for everyone. Um, everybody has commitments. Uh, uh, recruiting is difficult. And so what tends to happen is, we go recruit our friends, the people who are part of our normal commerce, and, um, and it has bothered, it has bothered me because I don't think we have the DEI lens in how we got the word out for these boards and commissions. How did we, uh, make people who may not be voters of this area but live in Bothell and call Bothell home, uh, know that they, their voice was welcome at the table and the boards and commissions? And even if it's people who aren't our best buds, they should be encouraged to apply for our boards and commissions. So at some point, if we have the bandwidth, if we could have some brainstorming recommendations, magic wand of how to make that happen, I would appreciate it. Um, but I do have to tell you, thank you for all your work. I so appreciate you being part of Bothell and, and helping us move this discussion.
Thank you so much, Councilmembers Orns. I'll tell you, I've done this work across many industries across the world and across the country, and especially across Washington State. And when it comes to recruiting for, for boards and commissions, that's as tough as recruiting for a school's PTA. And I don't know how many of you know about school PTAs, but demographically, representationally, racially, it's generally a small band, mostly of white women of a particular income level that have the disposable income and time to participate in something that is during the middle of the workday. I participated, I, I was, at one time even within the city of Bothell for my kid's elementary school. I won't, I won't name it right now, but I was the, uh, president of, uh, a, a PTA and felon on the wrong side of an equity issue with the PTA because I'm always pushing the envelope. But it's difficult to make that available for people that work. It's difficult to make that available for people who don't have the time during the day or need other, other assistance in order to participate. A board and commission is just like that. Regionally, when I did outreach and engagement over the, the last, uh, five months, six months, to seat community advisory bodies with cities, um, where we weren't, where some parts of the city weren't able to recruit for people, when we announced that there would be stipends attached to people's ability to, to get some compensation for participation, the numbers shot up through the roof. We had bodies where we had participants from the age of sixteen with local school districts up until, up to ninety years old. We had people well, representing the LGBTQI-plus community, different racial, cultural, ethnic communities, different income levels, different language, different, you know, first languages, uh, refugee people. We had a, a, a broad diversity, uh, in coalition. You see that in Kirkland, you'll see that in, in Kenmore, you see that in many places. And so when a city is able, you know, if, if you're asking someone to, to, to give their time on a board and commission, especially if they, for example, have a, a phone with prepaid minutes, they have to pay for the minutes, and then in order to access the meeting, they have to leverage what are prepaid minutes, not only if they're doing it without, without a stipend, are they doing it for you, but they're paying for the pleasure to do it. And so for some people, that's difficult. It's cost prohibitive, prohibitive, and it makes it inaccessible. So, you know, these are some things to think about in our region.
Councilmember Alderks.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Shannon, for this, uh, presentation. Looking, I've looked forward to this for a long time and grateful that you're, you're here and for all of the work that you've done. Um, I'm definitely looking forward to the study session coming up. That's gonna be really important for, uh, moving our work forward here in the city. Um, I do have a couple of questions, and one of those was the training that you provided to executive leadership, council, staff. Um, I was not able to participate in that because I wasn't yet on council, and so I'm wondering, is there a reprise available for new council members? That's the first question, and, uh, do you want me to ask the second one now?
I'll give you that answer quickly. We can, I'm sure that we can certainly, uh, probably work between council and city manager's office to make that available. Um, it is possible, so we can certainly do an addendum to the current contract in force and add additional training.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that, uh, very much. Um, because like, uh, Councilmember McNeil said, our learning is never done. Uh, there is so much to learn, um, and just, there's, you know, there are seven billion perspectives in the world, and, um, to really gain empathy with all of those, um, we have to kind of go beyond categories and, um, and really deeply understand one another as people. Um, so looking forward to continuing that learning journey and that you are part of it. The other question that I have is, um, I'm, I don't want to like, make you kind of reveal your plans if, it, or if they're not even shaped yet, but it sounds to me like there may be a possibility going forward where we continue consulting services with you and your company, um, as we, you know, bring on, perhaps there may be staff that we do bring on, but, um, to sort of to, as you create a plan, right, to, um, and recommendations for the city, we'll be able to check in with you if we continue working with you as a consultant. Could you, uh, speak to that?
Yes, I can. So, um, I have a team of thirteen people. Uh, it is a global team. I have, uh, staff mostly based out of the Washington area. I have also staff in Phoenix and, uh, Arizona and Texas and, uh, in the Philippines. And so I have a team that is, uh, that allows us the capacity to continue our relationship. I do have clients, both public and corporate, that, uh, ask for retainer agreement so that even when they do bring, uh, full-time staff on board, that they have the experience of, uh, a more seasoned subject matter expert to be able to look over the shoulder of the assessment, to, to get recommendations, to get insight where their staff may not have that capacity. And so that is possible. And you would not be the only city where I have that relationship.
Councilmember Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shannon. I, um, so I'm also interested in next steps. Um, not only as it pertains to, you know, choosing a city manager and council, um, choosing boards and commissions, but also, um, how it impacts policy. And in particular, I'm thinking about our next com-plan update. Um, I suffered a crushing defeat last Thursday on a bill that I had that, um, talked a lot about planning and environmental justice. And I would be really, uh, interested in how we could, um, use things like the health disparities map to understand, um, the implications of how we plan land use in the city of Bothell. And I wondered if that's something that was on your radar, if that's something, um, that we had discussed at all in terms of moving forward on, on equity and policy.
We did talk about policy. We didn't talk about a specific policy, but what we looked at was both of the policies, processes, and programs of the city of Bothell impacting the community, uh, in terms of the services provided, and also the workplace environment for the people that do the work. So the project that you're, the, the work that you're, you're discussing would be out of scope with regard to what I'm doing, but we can certainly talk about, uh, having it be something that could be in scope. So in scope today doesn't mean that it'll be out of scope next week on Monday, so we can certainly talk about that.
Thanks. Now, I just was kind of curious. I don't, I, you know, I'm kind of suffering from, from a session malaise, and so I'm trying to wrap my mind around what are, uh, you know, where, where your, I guess, your contract ends, and, um, and, and what the next steps might be if we wanted to continue that. So, um, apologies if I'm, uh, asking silly questions.
Oh, no, there's no such thing as a silly question. But I'll also say, Councilmember Duer, that you and I were, were tied together, and maybe you didn't know it last week on Friday. Uh, so congratulations on having one of your bills signed into law by Governor Inslee, specifically the one impacting community councils. The work that I do with the city of Kirkland, one of my recommendations was that they sunset, uh, community council, specifically the whole community council, because it did not represent what is essentially, uh, a best practice in terms of equity, representation of leadership, or representation of voice, and how it impacted, uh, planning, building, development, all of the community of Kirkland. And you sponsored that bill, and that bill was, uh, met with passage and signage. So congratulations on that.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you much for, for helping to uh to promote and advance equity across the state, all of the state of Washington.
Always my pleasure. Thank you.
Shannon, thank you so much for coming out. Thank you for doing this work with us. I too am interested in next steps and I'm uh curious um with what councilmember Doer said about looking at planning, you know, we have our comp plan update we're starting to work for this year and that's going to really guide a lot of what the city does over the next ten years now. So you know, if, it might be out of scope right now, but I'd be curious what we could do to use you for that process and to help it, help it be in scope. So I'd, I'd like.
I'm sorry. There's a lot of information that we're learning about the community insights, perspectives, the community scan to look at demographically, what, who makes up the community of Bothell. So we're learning an awful lot that would be uh absolutely germane irrelevant to the city's comp plan.
Phenomenal. Thank you so much for your help. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much.
All right. I think next up, we have the legislative update with Catherine.
Hello, um, my name is Catherine Jansen. I'm the executive assistant to the city manager. And I am here this evening with my final report on this year's legislative session, which closed on Thursday, March tenth. Bothell had a very successful legislative session, thanks in large part to our three District One legislators, Representative Davina Doer, Representative Shelley Kloba, and Senator Derek Sanford. We also owe a big thank you to our governmental affairs consultant, Shelley Helder, who worked tirelessly on our behalf throughout the session. And thank you to Mayor Thompson and Deputy Mayor Al Cabra for testifying at public hearings on bills of interest to the city of Bothell. On the last day of session, House Bill nineteen ninety was approved by the legislature and forwarded to the governor for signature. This bill authorizes the deferral of sales tax on projects along the four oh five one six seven corridor, creating up to seventy million dollars in savings to put towards the funding gap. This plus funding from the Move Ahead Washington package means that Wash dot can proceed with contracting for the North End improvements on four oh five. The Move Ahead Washington package also includes seven million dollars toward the Bothell Way widening project from Reader Way to two hundred and fortieth. This is an important project for transit and I'm sorry, this is an important project for transit as well as providing safety improvements for bicyclists and pedestrians. The supplemental capital budget includes five hundred thousand dollars toward the final phase of the North Creek Regional Trail. And the supplemental operating budget includes two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards a transportation demand management program for Canyon Park. This was a very busy compact session. Shelley Helder will be visiting council on April twelfth with a more comprehensive concluding report. Until then, do you have any questions? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Catherine. In keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's Emergency Proclamation twenty twenty eight regarding open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment and writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than three P M. Today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. City clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We do, Mayor Olson, our mayor Thompson. I did it again. I'm so sorry. Old habits die hard. But did you want to ask about council committee reports?
Oh, yeah. That would be a good idea, wouldn't it? Are there any council committee reports? Councilmember Alderks.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the North King County Coalition on homelessness and, and heard some, some updates. My notes were sent out to everybody, so hopefully you had a chance to review. Um, one thing I would call your attention to is that there's a number of questions that were posed to each city that are part of a coalition. And um I welcome hearing the thoughts of all members of council on those questions regarding affordable housing, regarding um how we can best work with King County uh Regional Housing Authority. So I would point you to your email on that. But kind of big news is that our local enhanced shelter is looking or will be looking for a new executive director because Walt Whitman is moving on to bigger and better things. He apologizes for his, his uh, his uh kind of interim status right now, but also that he was there for such a short time. But great opportunity presented itself that he is pursuing that. So um there will be some, some uh changes in leadership at the Oaks in Shoreline and future opportunities to work with them. So that's my update for today on, on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alderks. Councilmember Zornz.
Uh, yeah, LTAC meant today. And um there's some things facing LTAC that are time sensitive when we're looking at uh summertime and capitalizing on those tourism dollars. Um, so at some point, I think council is going to want to hear from um Danae, probably Brittany from the chamber, and probably Aurora on our ARPA funds. LTAC today approved a bare budget, bare bones budget. Because I think our mayor had said that, that he would like to see tangibles and we've got some tangible ideas of how to draw uh tourism. The goal is heads, heads in beds. Got to make sure that I get the right, right noun in the right position. So heads in beds. Tourism is one of those dollars that helps drive our economy and the city is facing some real challenges with our um inflation and uh, and just, gas is going to be driving everything up. So everything that we can do to generate money for the city is, is, I don't have to tell you, critical if we want to be able to do the things that we'd like to do for the city. So uh LTAC today approved two hundred and forty thousand dollars. It, it encovers reduced spending on marketing. It also involves events uh for the, that will help with the shoulder season. We're uh would like to develop uh weekend events, year-round weekend events. There is a great thing that uh Zulu has, is uh creating. And uh LTAC and the chamber would like to be part of helping um support that. That will be bringing a, a, a lot of dollars into the city. Gaming events for those gamers and people who have gamers in their lives. They know that this is a, board games as well as digital games is kind of a big deal and a big, big way to build revenue. Uh, and then there is also part of that two hundred and forty thousand dollars is a facility request center. There is a prospective spot that is not prime real estate, but is very, very accessible in downtown. And when the chamber moved from Country Village, the goal was to be on a ground level so that it's accessible for everyone. I love where the chamber is right now. It's, it's funky. It's got its own vibe, its own niche, but it's not very accessible to a big chunk of the population, whether they're not, whether they have small children or they have mobility issues. So we got to get, we got to get the chamber on, on uh street level. There is a spot, uh, and I think you would like to hear more about it. But we need council to understand it more and uh be able to uh get some answers to their questions. There's some things like we would like to light the bridge year-round. We would like to bring lighting into downtown. We would like to have music. There's, someone suggested a dog lover package that would bring people with their dogs into town. Art walks, a walking map that uh has uh very, that has dominant languages, Hindi and Spanish, that people who can come into Bothell can find their way around. Um, and all of that, the walking map, I think, I'm doing this from memory, so we're not going to trust it terribly. Just that is nine thousand dollars. So the wish list is big, um, but what it's been pared down to is small. And I think at some point when council would like to hear from what LTAC is trying to put together, time is of the essence and I would encourage us to put that on our plate.
Thank you, Councilmember Zornz. Councilmember Doer.
Yeah, I had a question. I was curious how much LTAC is talking about the coming Friday night market and helping to plan for that and maybe riffing off of that uh, those weekends.
Uh, that is, that is part, you know, you're right. Uh, LTAC is that intersection between our, our Friday night markets and our, you know, our parks, what's going on in our parks and um, and, and staff, city staff on availability to create our Friday night market, market. So um, we need a, we need a lot of people at that table who are willing to um find ways to make that happen. It's, it's important to um, not just to us here at the dais, but the city at large and to LTAC. And how do we, how do we get that message out and get people coming in? We, what, LTAC, I think you've probably, you may have missed some of this discussion. LTAC would like to uh have events that, that encourage people to spend the whole weekend in Bothell. So come on Friday night and on Saturday, we've got this going on. And um, and, and get people to come and stay and visit and, and um leave some money and come away with a great weekend.
I mean, that, I think that um is part of the vision. And I was just curious because um, you know, it's, we talked about the Friday night market back in the fall and before, three, three months from now is summer, so we need to plan quickly.
No, exactly. Uh, I, I, I will tell you, LTAC is feeling a little bit of a purple panic because time is of the essence. You're right. Summer is three months away. So we, we, we need to get active and moving on this quickly.
I um, I'm interested in tying in some of our Main Street discussion to this conversation that's happening right now. This might not be the best time to do it, but you know, having a pretty unique pedestrian experience for people to come visit might be a pretty cool draw and also gives us some space to do those kind of events that people might come for a weekend, gives us space to have festivals, things like that. So um, I think the, the LTAC goal might, might tie into our later discussion as well. Any other committee reports? All right. I already read the thing for visitor comments, so I'm not going to read that again. Laura, do we have anybody signed up?
We do, Mayor Thompson. Thank you. We had quite a number of written comments submitted uh yesterday and this afternoon. So I'm going to go through those really quickly and then we'll call for um in-person comments. Chris Jones wrote in support of keeping Main Street closed to motor traffic. Stephen Fessler wrote in support of keeping Main Street closed to motor traffic. Daniel Dolback wrote in opposition in keeping it pedestrianized as it unfairly hurts non-restaurant businesses, makes ADA access more difficult, and losing grant funding is not visibly responsible. Carrie Westerback wrote in support of keeping Main Street pedestrianized and going with option two to make the current closure permanent. Bonnie Plotner wrote in support of keeping Main Street pedestrianized and going with option two. Brian Mitchell wrote in support of doing only intermittent closures until a full traffic study can be completed. Kevin Schmidt wrote in support of keeping Main Street closed for motor traffic and focusing on a plan that would build upon, build upon it for business and community. Edith Ericson Berg wrote in opposition to keeping Main Street closed to traffic, expressing concerns for business visibility, fire, rescue response. Uh, she would like to see a hundred and first closed instead. Jenny Thulier wrote in support of keeping Main Street pedestrianized and going with option two to make the current closure permanent. Dan Gomez wrote in support of keeping Main Street pedestrianized and making the current closure permanent. Donna Bardley wrote in support of keeping Main Street pedestrianized and going with option two to make the current closure permanent. Sterling Castle wrote in support of keeping Main Street pedestrianized and making the current closure permanent. Michelle Coolidge wrote in opposition of keeping Main Street closed to traffic and encourages council to reopen Main Street to cars. Sonia, no last, no last name, wrote in support of keeping Main Street pedestrianized and expressed concerns for pedestrians if it were be, if it would were to be opened back up to cars. Paul Dunham wrote in support for keeping Main Street pedestrianized and that parking spaces are better utilized for outdoor seating. Cindy Bonnie wrote in support of keeping Main Street pedestrianized and making the current closure permanent. Scott Johnson wrote in support of keeping Main Street closed to motor traffic. Lee Henderson wrote in support of keeping Main Street closed to motor traffic and urged council to consider what the community at large wants. Kirsten Kerr wrote in support for keeping Main Street closed to motor traffic and urged council to create and retain space for people instead of traffic downtown. Paul Warren wrote in support of keeping Main Street closed to motor traffic. Greg Smith wrote in support for keeping Main Street pedestrianized and making the current, current closure permanent. Malia McCauley wrote in support for keeping Main Street pedestrianized as it creates a sense of community. Rosemary Sutton wrote in support of keeping Main Street pedestrianized for a sense of community, walkable environment, enhancement of business. And Anne Gate, Anne Agard wrote in regards to Main Street closure decision as part of a larger issue involving Hundred and Second Street, Riverside Drive, and access to parking. Uh, that is the full list of public comment, written public comment. All will be made part of the record and I believe you all received those comments via email today. Uh, as far as live comment, we have Andrew Nelson um signed up to speak. And he is with us. Andrew, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, yes, hi, council. So today I wanted to talk about actually a lot of things, but um Deputy Mayor's, Deputy Mayor Al Cabra's request uh to talk about lot E F G's immediate future. I think it's really important. You know, right now, as all of you know, it's just a parking lot that just gets on getting contaminated. And before we sell it, I'm assuming we're going to sell it, it has to be decontaminated anyways. I'd like to see a community space so we can, you know, use that lot before we lose that lot. I'm also would like to say that I'm also in favor of keeping Main Street closed permanently for pedestrians. I saw on page fifty-three of the agenda, uh, city staff went door-to-door and uh got businesses, different businesses um opinions on it. And nine were in favor of it and seven were not. Uh, so I think that's something you as a legislative body are have to think about and consider. I think uh the businesses are really, you know, that's who's going to really um affect the most, I think. And so I'm happy the city staff did that. That was excellent. So kudos to them. I like to say I also like the proclamations uh written today and, and whatnot, especially the developmental disability one. I actually had an I E P throughout eighth, through eighth grade to twelfth grade, individualized education plan. And it's something I struggle with. And it's something that, you know, I think a lot of people do struggle with, period. So I think it's excellent that we, that we signed that and we wrote that. Lastly, I'd like to say I thoroughly enjoyed the D E I presentation. Uh, I just, I, I love that, so I'm happy we have that. But anyways, guys, as always, thank you for your service and have a good rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Um, that is all I have signed up. However, there are a few people in the audience that may wish to speak live. If you, if you do wish to speak, please use the raise hand function and we will panel you in. Give them a minute to do that. I'm not seeing anybody. Mayor Thompson.
All right. We have, um, our next agenda item is use of block E F and G requested by Deputy Mayor Al Cabra. I think before we do that, um, I want to take a break. And I think we're going to break for fifteen minutes. We will come back at seven twenty-five. That's fourteen minutes. We'll come back at seven twenty-five. And we will look at the use of block E F G.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Back on as you jump back in so we can make sure we know we have everybody here. Councilmember Aldrich, Deputy Mayor Al Cabra. The Deputy Mayor, you're kind of necessary to start this next one off. All right. So this is a council requested item, the Deputy Mayor requested to put this on the agenda item to discuss working and with Lot EF and G. And Deputy Mayor, I'll turn it over to you and let you tell us what you have on your mind.
Thank you, Mayor, and as all of you read, or probably read, I'm trying to keep it short. Here are my observations, you know, the block is a prime spot in Bothell. We're all disappointed in how Lot D went, so hopefully that this block will not will be better used and better designed. Currently, it's used as a permanent parking if you drive through, there's actually cars that have been parked there for more than two years now. And they haven't moved, literally haven't moved. There is no observable work happening, you know, we talked about decontamination, I don't, I don't see any construction, any work happening. Pandemic restrictions are easing, the weather is getting nice, and communities asking for community space. You know, there's a lot of disappointment that country village went away. And there's a need in our community for some space similar to that. So here's my hypothesis, if we do some, if we create a community space there, it will benefit humans, not cars, it will create, we could possibly create a temporary small business park similar to those pop-up shops right adjacent to that lot, which will improve communities' well-being, answered revenue, you know, related to councilmember Zorn's, you know, discussion around the LTAC and ideas for generating tourism dollars in the area. So now this will not only help our residents and community well-being, it will also attract others, we all like to travel to Twin Lake, Wilsonville, places why that, why can't we have Bothell be a destination? And just to show an idea, I sent this, you know, a few minutes before the meeting to the, to the council, but this turned out to be something, the internet, you know, it's nice because they, they read your thought, Google reads your thoughts, and creates something, we don't, it doesn't have to be something that's expensive, but at some point, to do something similar where we have a bunch of food trucks, you know, a bunch of, lot of food trucks, and maybe other retail, a place for people to hang out. And related to our discussion later on, for Main Street, we can connect this space to the, this lot, to Main Street, to the, you know, if we decide to close, you know, whatever decision is happening. We can have a discussion later, but you know, this is, this is the proposal to put, you know, this on the agenda for, you know, for staff to help us discuss this further with a lot more detail. And this is the first time we do this, so I don't even know what to do next.
Ideally, I can, I can help a little bit.
Yeah.
So yes, agreed, as the Deputy Mayor said, first time through, so appreciate everybody's patience. So staff, if we could get council direction, council support to bring this item back, staff is prepared to, we're aiming for the May 3 city council meeting to bring it back for council discussion.
Some members on.
Well, that is a lot fancier drawing. Bringing food trucks down there on that, on EFG is something that I've been talking about, so I think you're, you're probably preaching to the choir, I think probably all of council will be for this, that, that is a very fancy drawing. I will tell you, councilmember Mankie has more experience with it than I do, it's a huge undertaking. Not to say we shouldn't do it, but we need to be prepared that it's, it's a big undertaking. Food trucks commit, it's, you know, getting them to commit to these spots, they're, they're kind of like the, the farmer's markets, they start deciding where they're going to go, they've got things planned out. I think there would be a lot, that lot would be a huge attraction for a lot of food trucks. But the other thing that I'll be looking from, from staff is how are we going to fund the cleanup? We have right now, what is it, seven parks members right now? I think it falls on them to manage our events, so I guess one of the questions that I would say that we should be prepared to ask is, is there a fee that we attach to these food, these events? So that we can hire the cleanup helps and the porta-potties and, you know, all those other little expenses, but yeah, let's go for it. And great drawing, by the way, I really like that.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a great idea, Deputy Mayor McCabro. I guess I do have a couple of questions, and that is, given that I haven't heard about our plans for the Friday night market, I want to be sure that we're not distracting from that goal while trying to move in the direction of this endeavor. So I guess I would need to know a little bit more and have more updates on where are our plans around the Friday night market? And/or is there a way to integrate this? Because we had talked about food trucks, I don't know that we had picked a spot, I thought staff was going to come back at some point, so this may just, you know, kind of meld with that overall Friday night idea that we had talked about. I just, I need to know a little bit more about resources and how, how it might work or not work with, with accomplishing the goal of the Friday night market. But I'm, I think it's a great idea, I, I went to something similar to this down in California. They had just every Friday night, they had a food truck roundup, and it's super fun, it's, it's really great. You know, if you're a person who likes food, which I am, you just, you know, go through all of them and then pick where you're going to have your, you know, your appetizers, your, your main course, and then your desserts, and it's, it's a lot of fun. So yeah, I think it's a great idea, I just, I need to know more.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Deputy Mayor Al Cabra for bringing this to us. It's, it's an exciting concept, and I like what councilmember Doer is saying, if we can't combine it with Friday night markets, then we're talking about multiple blocks of downtown becoming a very fun place to be. My question however is, are we just, are like, is, does your proposal just include sort of special events, like one evening or weekend, or once a month? Or, or is this something that would be set up and kind of operate, you know, business days? And so that's one question, and the other one is, what can we learn from the North Creek Food Truck Park? That is over there, over off of Montevilla? Because they have infrastructure set up, parking, picnic tables. And so it's already, like, we already have an example of this in our community. Was involved in that, how do we learn from that? How do we create something that is both temporary in the sense of eventually there's going to be buildings built on EF and G? But that would allow sort of semi-permanent? That maybe every day there are food trucks, different food trucks showing up. And so that the people who are living, working downtown will have just a fun, fun change, you know, change of opportunity for other various food options. So that might be a lot to, for you to take in, but I'd love it if you could respond Deputy Mayor with some of your thoughts.
I did not go into those details, honestly, the whole point of this is to, one of the exercises to decide, to get more information for us to decide whether we need, we can move forward and getting more information, or should we just self it and worry about something else? It is something that maybe, starting with weekends, and then if it's really successful, we can start testing, because it's food trucks, they can come and go testing, again, this is a temporary thing until we actually have a permanent solution for that block. So we can start testing other temporary things going on there, extend the pop-up shops, for example, reserve a section for more shops, therefore retail more than food, and make that, to overload the term mixed use. But I will yield to others who have raised their hands.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, and thank you Deputy Mayor for bringing, bringing this forward. There was mention of cars would park there for, for a couple of years. So I'd love to hear more about that, why, why there's cars parked there for, for a couple of years. What is the, the long-term plan for any cleanup that needs to be done? Understanding what that, that looks like when that's starting, what the timeframes would be? Understanding other restaurants within the downtown area? Getting input from them on, on having multiple food trucks and other dining areas is just a good opportunity for them to have takeout and brought over to this area, kind of what, what does that look like? Sounds like this is all going to come back potentially on the third, so maybe having some of those answers and maybe what it actually would look like and how you would tie it into, to other parts of the, to the downtown. Would be good to have.
Councilmember Mankie.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you Deputy Mayor for bringing this forward. I wholly support using our properties for the highest and best purpose that we have at the time. This one is definitely underutilized, so I am excited and looking forward to hearing from staff on how we can make something like this occur, hear all the research of what it would take, community input, engagement, business engagement, all of those things at a future meeting, so I am supportive of this.
Councilmember Doer.
Sorry to double dip, I just had one quick thought, which was if we, if it could start earlier than the summer, it might be like a slow kind of ramp up to, if it was on Friday nights, you know, start this maybe a few weeks earlier and kind of build that momentum, that could be a, a nice way to, to get the, the Friday night market started.
So I love this, I love being able to take a piece of property that is underutilized and do something cool with it that I think the community could really enjoy and really get behind. I love that you even found a picture that's like roughly the same shape as Lot EF and G, I'm not sure how you pulled that off, but that's cool. You know, as we look at simple ways to make Bothell a destination, I, I think a really pleasing pedestrian experience and cool things to do is something where we can have a unique advantage in the region. I wasn't thinking for Friday nights, I was thinking like food truck Saturdays, the next day during the day. You know, it could be, you know, we could, we could even throw a band down there, I think the pop-up shops would probably really like having all of those people close by. You know, the park's right there, as we get into the summertime, I think it could be a really nice way to activate our downtown. You know, the other thing is the block in between 527 and 101st on Main Street. There were a couple of businesses in 2020 that wanted us to pedestrianize that block as well. And if we moved the, and extended the pedestrian, pedestrianization of Main Street down, it would actually connect to EF and G. And there could be kind of a nexus of cool places to go and things to do on your feet in Bothell. And, and we've probably got tents and parks that we could use. There's probably things that we could do using what we have to stand something up and do something pretty cool, and I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what, what staff brings back to us. Councilmember Doer. Okay. All right, well, that was pretty easy and pretty unanimous. I think we've got some direction for staff, and I would just say if there are other ideas that staff has aside from food trucks or different ways to leverage that property, we'd, we'd love to hear those ideas as well. Councilmember Doer.
I did want to ask, interim city manager Len Hart, when can we expect to hear about plans around the Friday night markets?
Thank you for asking, Councilmember Doer, the staff person that council budgeted for actually starts tomorrow. And I believe Parks and Recreation Director Stroop has reached out to a few of you to introduce you to her and, and get your vision for it. And I, I believe the plan is to have the initial event on July 8th, I believe. So more to come now that she is actually on board, and I anticipate that Director Stroop will be bringing her to a council meeting to introduce her to the full council soon.
I would very much like to be on the list of people that she talks to about the Friday night market.
Yes, you will see an email in your, in your mailbox next time you check.
All right, anybody else? Oh, Councilmember Mankie.
One other item to bring up for discussion, I don't know if now's the appropriate time, if we are yet finished with the previous topic.
Does it relate to Lot EF and G?
It does not.
Um, we, is it appropriate for council conversations when we do things like that?
It's, it's related to the projected agenda discussion item, so it is, it does belong in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, cool.
Perfect, I just wanted to, to bring up an idea potentially for a projected agenda item, I'm happy to fill out the form if you think it's necessary, but it's not a new, a new idea for a new concept. The request is that we look at adding a study session, study session item on boards and commissions with the intent of reviewing our municipal code, because it is quite old for each one. Ensuring that we have the appropriate boards and commissions that we want to have as a council to advise us. Making sure that we're, you know, providing guidance to each board and commission on proper direction, impactful deliverables, you know, helping them be successful in their duties and their, their volunteering for the city. And then also look at potential ad hoc groups, that could be temporary boards and commissions that are focused on a specific thing that we may want to accomplish, similar to the DEI committee that we have right now. That comes in, again, very limited duration, has a definite outcome that we would like to solve for, and then once their service is done, the committee closes. I, I don't expect the DEI committee to do that, I suspect we may want to have a longer-term DEI committee of community members, but just thinking through other opportunities that we may have, there may be some out there that we want to consider that type of committee for. So I'd love to bring that up during perhaps council retreat or a future study session time where we can dig into that deeper.
Perfect, I think the council retreat would be a good time to have that conversation, it's a little out of the scope of this agenda item. But, but duly noted, and I would welcome that conversation. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, and just to clarify, Councilmember Mankie, were you asking to have a formal discussion on that versus at a retreat? I just want to make sure I clarified, because I think I heard the mayor mention doing it at the retreat, I just wanted to make sure I clarified, because you had mentioned study session.
I think we can really do it either, either place. If it's aligning to our goals, you know, we, if we're discussing goals at the retreat, I think that's okay. If we want it to be a more open conversation, I know that everyone's welcome to come to our retreat, but we generally in the past have not recorded it, or, I don't know if we record it, we don't broadcast it live, so it just depends on how open of a discussion we would like to have with the community. Or if we want to bring it back after our goal discussion and, and openly talk about it at that point in a broadcasted recording, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause conversation on this, because this is not related to the agenda item that we're discussing right now. And I'd say if we want to keep having more conversations about that, we can do that in council conversations. This is for the projected, the, the things that we bring, fill the form out, do the thing, talk about it. So let's, let's have this conversation, finish it up in council conversations.
So just for clarification, Mayor, the item was brought forward as a, a potential projected agenda item.
Yep, and we have a process for that and getting it in this section of the meeting. So if you want to have something where you have a conversation about it in this section of the meeting, we have a process for that, there's a forum, you get two other council members to do it. Council conversations is more for free-flowing things that are not prepared.
Just for the record, staff advised that I do bring it up during this time, so that was the reason why it was in council conversations, staff recommended specifically for this agenda item.
All right, well, maybe I'm wrong then.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, so Councilmember Mankie, for me, kind of listening to you talk about the study session versus the retreat, for me, I'd like to see it in a, in a more of a study session setting so that we can have more of an open discussion. This is kind of, it feels a little bit germane to the conversation we just had, or the presentation with the DEI consultant earlier in the, the meeting tonight, so I, I think, you know, talking through that and, and having that opportunity to study session, I'd be supportive of that.
Deputy Mayor.
So just for me to clarify, and this is for interim city manager Len Hart. I, I went through the process, I just want to make sure, are we going to formalize this process of putting stuff on the projected agenda, or are we going to also do things at our purpose? So that we, we can have meetings that are, because we can add, each one of us can add a bunch of stuff, and we can go on to that.
Go for it, Aaron.
Okay, thank you. So the council protocol manual has two different options for adding things to the projected agenda, so this, this area of your, of your agenda is both for the forms that are submitted, which are the media items, which this one probably qualifies as a media item too. But also, for example, requests for proclamations or requests for guest speakers and that sort of thing. Council, the, I think the intent of this portion of your agenda would be to satisfy those as well. But I do agree with the Deputy Mayor and that this, this media of an item would, would benefit from a, a form. And it probably would be a good conversation to start at your retreat, and then perhaps if council is interested in having a further discussion about it, then it could follow up later, but I would recommend at this point that Councilmember Mankie submit a form for this, and then we can add it to a, a future conversation.
Okay, Councilmember Aldrich. Last, last comment on this topic.
Okay, thank you, I just look at this as an opportunity for us to learn how to use our procedures and our protocols. So I do appreciate interim city manager Len Hart's feedback on this, definitely, it sounds like this is the type of thing we can bring up in this meeting, and if it hasn't been discussed with other council members outside of council, then is this an opportunity, and maybe this is a, a question for you, interim city manager, that is this then an opportunity to find who your second and your third is to, to sign the form later? And I don't know, I don't know if that's how you're using it, Councilmember Mankie, but it seems like that, that could be a natural outflow of this type of proposal. Am I understanding that correctly?
Councilmember Mankie.
Uh, yes, I'm, like I said, I'm happy to fill out the form, I was advised to bring it here rather than fill out the form, so I will be filling out the form and bringing it that way in the future.
All right, I lied, Councilmember Zorn.
Fill out the form and I'll be your second or third person to sign on that. I think this is going to be a big discussion and probably will need a small committee to do some rough draft, so.
So way to, way to give us some homework, but I think it's a good project.
All right. I think we, I don't think you'll have any trouble finding two more people to sign on for that. And and we can bring it forward and prepare and have a conversation about it. And I'm looking forward to that. Onto the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Doer.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Second.
All right, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Councilmember Zornz.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Aldrich.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Councilmember Manki.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Yes.
Pass the seven zero.
Thank you, clerk. All right, we are moving on to Agenda Bill. Two, two, zero, four, one, the Main Street closure. And it looks like we've got interim Assistant City Manager Becky Range and City Engineer Steve Morikawa to give us a short presentation and then entertain our questions.
And interim city manager Len Hart will be kicking us off. So thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So just a little bit of background, the one block of Main Street between 101st and 102nd was closed in June of 2020 as part of the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. At that point in time, council directed staff to allow private use of the right of way and and general spaces throughout downtown at no charge to support the city's businesses and help them through the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic. So why are we here tonight? Well, the last time we spoke with council about the temporary closure, it was extended and the fee suspension was extended to March 31st. So here we are in March. Also, the, all of the restrictions associated with COVID-19 have now been lifted statewide. So the, we actually did a good job predicting that that March would be a good time to have this conversation. And also, we have three new council members who weren't engaged in the conversation previously. So wanted to bring it back to you and feel it's it's time to make some decisions about the closure of Main Street. So as the mayor mentioned, joining me tonight, I have Steve Morikawa, the Capitol Division Manager from Public Works and interim Assistant City Manager Becky Range to walk us through some items associated with transit, DEI and some downtown community engagement. So with that, I will toss it over to Steve.
So good evening, deputy mayor, mayor, council members. I don't know, can you hear me? I'm going to try to start PowerPoint, the very basic one. Oops, wrong button. Hang on. Share. Okay, hopefully you're all looking at a map of downtown. Anyway, good evening. I've been asked to provide some information on downtown traffic and transit. I'll try to quickly go through some things like background history on downtown in terms of the transportation with the downtown plan, provide some information on the upcoming transit corridor, talk a little bit about emergency response, and then talk about some opportunities. So the downtown, existing and adopted downtown plan was built around creating a dense walkable urban core with a transit oriented street on Northeast 185th Street. The vision was to encourage transit and alternative transportation modes like bikes and pedestrians. But it was recognized that transit had to share some of the existing arterials and that the street network would have to perform acceptably for vehicular traffic in order to get acceptable transit performance. In terms of east-west roads, we only have State Route 522 on the south here. We have Main Street. We do have 183, but it doesn't go all the way through to the campus and we do have 185th. Drivers are often trying to get across the 102nd Avenue Bridge. And they're also trying to get down to 522, especially eastbound to try to get on I-405. Pre-COVID, COVID has interrupted traffic and changed traffic patterns. But pre-COVID, we did see backups on right turn as people are trying to use 185th to get down 102nd and also right turns on 104th as they tried to get down Kiesner off of 185th as well. Because we have short blocks and we have many four-way stop intersections and the fact that we have just a couple non-highway streets going through our downtown, any closure or congestion kind of gets amplified and you kind of have to take a closer look at how it affects the immediate adjacent downtown grid as well. So when they were working throughout downtown plan a while ago, we actually worked with the transit stakeholders, Community Transit, Sound Transit, as well as King County Metro. And they all agreed to use the 185th corridor. That's kind of why we created the 98 going and kind of curving around here. 522 was not seen as an option. They did want to serve and they agreed with the city that they wanted to serve downtown. And people tend to walk about a quarter mile. So there's a quarter mile radius of where people will get on a bus. And if you put that quarter mile centered on 522, then essentially what happens is the bottom half of that quarter mile is kind of in a green area, not really where people will be living or working. Main Street was not seen as the primary or best location for buses to intermix with things like pedestrians as well as, you know, street use essentially on that corridor. So 185th was chosen. And it was recognized that it would have impacts if we put all the transit on 185th because the neighborhoods are essentially kind of transitioning down into downtown Bothell there as well. November 2019, which was our last pre-COVID traffic counts, we had about 5,000 average daily trips on 185th and about 6,000 on Main Street. And expected increase in the long-term future is somewhere between 7,500 and 9,000 on each roadway in the future. So in terms of transit, Sound Transit is paying for improvements along the 185th corridor. And they're trying to improve travel time and get as they go through our downtown. This was the work that they did and the studies that they would do was assuming that Main Street was open at the time. So what they're going to do is put a signal, traffic signals at 104th and 185th. They're going to put another one at Beardsley in 185th as well. They're also going to put a dedicated short right turn lane onto 102nd to try to help up that, help out with that backup in the mornings as well as one on 104th. A couple of transit agencies, while we've been working with them on this corridor, and all the transit agencies have agreed to move the 185th corridor, which is kind of cool because what we'll say is there'd be somebody in downtown Bothell come up to you and say, where do you catch a bus? You just say, go to 185th, and it's kind of cool. A couple of transit agencies were actually asked if we could make that corridor transit only because there's going to be a lot of transit on there and they're kind of worried about making sure that there was reliability as well as good travel times. So if we do choose to close Main Street, we just wanted to make sure everybody is aware that there could be some effect on transit. The cars that would normally do Main Street, whether they're going through or trying to get on 102nd Avenue, some of them would use 522, some of them would take left turns on 101st and right turns on 183, but some of them would use 185th as well. So let's talk a little bit about transit to give you a context. The BRT route, like I said, they're coming from Seattle in one direction and they'll take a left turn on 98. And the first stop is here in front of the King County Library. And they'll go through 98th all the way along 185th. And they will also stop in front of Husky Village. There's also a stop at 104th. But through our downtown, the point eight miles is pretty much from King County Library to the Husky Village stop. With the improvements that they're putting in, the traffic signal improvements and the right turns, it will take about five and a half to six and a half minutes in the long term in the 2042 Horizon year when they did their studies to get from King County Library to Husky Village stop. That's about an eight or nine miles per hour average speed, including intersection, intersection stops. And the travel time improvements essentially saved about two minutes of travel time in each direction. So on opening day, and this figure here is opening day from what Sound Transit kind of collected with all the other agencies, there's probably going to be about 18 to 20 buses in the peak hour in each direction. This shows 23, but I was looking closer at this thing. And this calls for six buses, 105 Community Transit Route an hour. And actually, they come every half an hour in peak. So I think this is an overcount by four. So I'm saying there's going to be somewhere between 18 and 20 actually buses in each direction. That's about one bus every three, three and a half minutes in each direction. Now, if Swift comes down, it looks still fairly similar, but there's going to be that additional six buses per hour coming down because Swift has a 10-minute headway. And in the future, King County also expects to increase some of the headways in some of their local routes. So there could be actually up to about 30 buses in each direction during the peak hour. And that's a bus every two minutes or so. But that's again, in the long term. Again, for transit, travel time reliability is important. So again, just for context, I don't have all the numbers, but I did talk to Sound Transit. And their estimated long-term ridership would be potentially about 400 people boarding. So they typically count boardings and they also talk about getting off as well at late. But we're talking boarding, so about 400 people at the King County Library stop, potentially another 400 at the 104th stop here. And of course, the campus is going to have the most. They probably have about 800 at your campus. That doesn't include the stop at 195th and I-405. There's one more stop along their route because now they're going to turn around at the I-405 and change. King County, I'll talk to them a little bit. They currently have a 372 and eventually they hope to convert that to kind of like their rapid ride, BRT. But the 372 runs pretty frequently now and in fall of 2019, again, pre-COVID because all the transit ridership went down during COVID. But during pre-COVID, they had pretty much about 500 boardings a day in Bothell. So that kind of just gives you a kind of a context of the transit. Now, when we're working with transit, we also have to recognize that this corridor is also our emergency response route. So the police station is located between 101st and 102nd and they have an exit here. So they respond both eastbound and westbound. And of course, the fire stations here on the corner of Beardsley and 185th and their westbound response is through 185th. They will have Opticom, that's the little button that they can basically press when they're going past the intersection. So this one will be signaledized at 104th, so that will get them through easier. However, it is a one-lane road in each direction and there is parking, so it gets kind of tight. So what we've tried to do is make sure that there are passing points. So as an example, there will be a dedicated right turn lane here going westbound and then making a right turn to 104th. And that also allows cars to clear out well, but it also gives kind of a passing lane. So if they hear a siren, either the bus or cars can pull over and there's a passing point. We have another kind of smaller passing point at 102nd. But we as staff have agreed that we will have to monitor 185th over the long term because if we start seeing that emergency response travel times increases, we might need to do more. And more might include putting a left turn pocket at 101st, again, to create a passing point or even considering potentially taking parking off because parking does create friction when people try to park, open doors, that sort of thing. It slows everybody down as well. It's two-way center turn lane will look more like a wider road, but it would also provide a passing point for emergency response. So those are some of the things we'll have to consider in the long term. So from a transportation point of view, staff can support closing Main Street as long as possible, as long as it doesn't adversely affect transit or emergency response. And the difficult time is really just, is really the AM and PM peak hours. We'd have to monitor how much traffic comes back after COVID. And then we could figure out available opportunities for closure. But some of the potential opportunities would be such as off-peak hours during weekdays, like after the PM peak hour. We'd have to check midday traffic numbers because sometimes those are unusual. If there's enough activity going in downtown, sometimes people are trying to get there to eat lunch. Could be weekends, all day, all night. Again, we probably have to be more careful with Saturday because Saturday typically now has rush hours versus Sunday, which is pretty quiet. Could definitely be holidays and could potentially be a substantial amount of summer months when both the North Shore School District as well as University of Washington, Bothell and Cascadia College are in summer session. So those, that's just some of the information about emergency response, transit and traffic that we wanted to put out there for consideration. And I think I'm passing it on to Becky. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Becky, we can't hear you. Standby.
All right, we're going to try this again. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Oh, fantastic. Well, thank you, Erin, for allowing me to swap seats with you. I'm not sure what's going on with our technical difficulties. If you can go ahead and share those slides, that would be helpful. Thank you so much. So as we learn more about this topic, we wanted to give just a couple of updates to council on things that we're learning. One of those items is DEI considerations. So Shannon spoke to this earlier with much more expertise and eloquency than I ever could. But just a few things we wanted to bring to council. As you know, council has prioritized pursuing equity through inclusive community engagement for staff. They have asked that as we work through decision-making, that we always think about applying an equity lens to everything that we do. And we are not experts at this. It's something that we're learning and getting better at. And so one of the things that Shannon mentioned earlier was a self-reflection tool and how it's something that we can apply to decisions. And as we went through that tool and also discussed that tool with Shannon, there were a couple of questions that really spoke to us as we think about this very important decision. Specifically, if decisions are going to specifically impact marginalized people, have we thought about those harmful results? And have we heard from disparate impacted communities? One of the things that we are struggling with is as we hear from our traffic experts and. Um, one of the things that we are struggling with is as we hear from our traffic experts and engineers. And engage with our transit communities, um, if transit is to be impacted at all. With any decisions that we make on closures, um, that's a growing concern for us for uh from a DEI perspective. And also for the economic health of our downtown. Um, some of the things that we have talked with Shannon about. Um. Uh, she believes, and we also believe from reviewing um our transit agency's equity documents, that. Reliable and dependable transit is very critical for low-income communities, uh, low-wage employees, students and people of color. So it's just something uh that we want to be thinking about as we make decisions. Um, something that we also have been learning is that as we think about our DEI inclusive engagement. And how if we're being really honest with ourselves, we haven't done much engagement. At all for the Main Street closure. And it's important for us to not only think about uh disparately impacted communities, but also just our engagement strategy. And if I'm being completely honest, you know, we. We didn't have a community engagement strategy um to think about this decision. Uh, we didn't do any phasing of community engagement. Uh, which might have been a little more helpful for us in the beginning. And what I mean by that. Is that we probably should have stepped through all the different stakeholders um that we needed to hear from in this process. Um. We weren't in uh really given strong direction to do that, but we also felt like we had started to hear some feedback from businesses directly on Main Street. Our Economic Development Director had received um some feedback that uh some Main Street properties were actually um. Not being positively impacted by the closure. And so we thought it's probably really important that first phase of engagement should really include the actual businesses. On Main Street. And so we did just a very general survey. We're not, we're not experts. We don't have a ton of time and money to devote to that, but um. We did do a first survey. Um. Uh, Andrew spoke about it earlier. It actually wasn't a door-to-door survey that we did for the Main Street businesses. We actually did a survey. Um, and asked that our Economic Development Manager help distribute that to all the properties on Main Street. Um, it was really uh interesting um to hear their feedback and uh to just learn a little bit more uh about what they think. Um, not everyone completed the survey. Um, I think we have received a few since um we put this together. But um, we heard from nine businesses on Main Street that are absolutely positively impacted by this closure. Um, it's been great for their business. Uh, it's been wonderful for them. They've been able to expand the footprint of their business. Um, they love having a gathering space. And a pedestrian-friendly area in front of their business. It's been wonderful for their business. Um, seven of the businesses on Main Street did relay to us that they have been negatively impacted by the temporary street closure. Um, it, there was a variety of issues, but the main issues that we heard is that depending on the type of business that they are, um, and actually negatively impacted their business. Um, they benefit from drive-by traffic. Uh, their customers or clients um may have blocked access. It's difficult for them to get to their business. Um, lots of comments about parking. And there were some comments about space inequity issues. Some businesses feel that if they're not able to expand in the street in the same way as others. That their business is actually negatively impacted. So the survey, we heard lots of different things. Um, and this uh, the written survey. Um, uh, the Main Street businesses, we tried to do a separate collector link, so we were really interested to hear what they had to say, but we were also interested to see what other downtown businesses. Had to say. And so we did a couple of things. We tried to distribute a written survey, and then we also, we did do door-to-door, old-fashioned door-to-door. Uh, we walked along one eighty-fifth, talked to several businesses, residents, and also uh hit several businesses. And employees on Bothell Way. Uh. Lots of things we're hearing, a key theme, and obviously we've, we've heard a lot about this before now. Residents love this pedestrian area. Uh, they love this area that's been created. Um, they love to hang out there and socialize with people, and they feel like it's a safe place to be. Um. That is, that we're hearing that loud and clear from many folks, uh, many residents. Um, we also heard that we asked in the survey about permanent closures, intermittent closures. And the residents were pretty overwhelmingly clear that they were concerned that an intermittent enclosure would be really confusing. That it would be confusing to the public, to the general. Population. They don't know when to come down to, to Main Street. Um, there were a lot of respondents that loved intermittent closures. Um, they talked a lot about seeing that as a compromise. Um, lots of people talked about uh the intermittent closures being done during very nice and dry weather times and also during off-peak traffic times. Um, we. It was really interesting. We talked to lots of businesses on one eighty-fifth. We did not really want to share information with the businesses on one eighty-fifth, like share um. Staff's recommendations or staff's concerns about emergency access or transit impacts. We, we're just, we're trying to be really careful about this initial engagement. And so when we just said, hey, let's just walk up and down one eighty-fifth and talk to folks. And there were a lot of folks on one eighty-fifth that are already concerned about existing traffic. And lots of comments about the increase in density. Um, there's a new development going up nearby and. Lots of comments about parking. Many people on one eighty-fifth are not aware of future transit plans. Um, and the transit corridor that will be on one eighty-fifth. Um, and that's something we should probably do a little bit better on our community engagement, but lots of folks weren't even aware of that. Um, I will say that there were many uh businesses. That as they responded, they actually asked what the Main Street businesses want. Um, and this is kind of an example of what I say by phased engagement. People were giving input and they actually wanted more input and results of engagement that we hadn't actually done. And so it's just a little bit problematic for a comprehensive community engagement effort. Um, and a lot of folks also would ask us like, well. You know, what does staff think? What, they weren't aware of the transit impacts. And we didn't, like I said, we didn't really feel comfortable. Um, sharing a lot of that information because we didn't want to, to bias that initial engagement. Um, so what I would say is. I think uh a phased engagement approach might have been beneficial, might still be beneficial, because I think it's really important to understand what some of our other stakeholders think. Uh, namely Uda Bachel and Cascadia College. I think their input would be really important to hear. Any questions for me? I know that was kind of quick. Thank you for being flexible with our technical difficulties. Questions for me?
Councilmember Alderks.
All right, I can unmute. Um, thank you, Mayor, and um, and thank you, Becky, for, for considering these topics. Um, however, what I'm hearing is. The equity impacts are relatively unknown at this point. Um, and so there's not really much we can go off of in terms of, in terms of saying, we know that there is an impact here, and we need to somehow figure out a way to address that. Except for transit, transit being very important and making sure that we have, um, that we have a good, you know, linked. System of transit through downtown Bothell that connects the um library and the west side of the city with the east side of the city and uh the colleges. So. I get that. And. I guess my question is. What kind of direction are you looking for from us when it comes to determining? What equity impacts might be? Uh. How do, you know, how do we, you know, if we don't know, then is there, is there a proposal in place to? Um, to, to do some of that? I hear some ideas, but is that something that staff had come to us with more concrete plans?
Such a great question, Councilmember Alderks. Um, because we struggle with that as well. We. You know, for us, it's really about the process. We just want to give you as much data and information as we can to inform your decision-making. And we struggle with really knowing the impacts. And so. Um, like for an example of that is that, you know, when we. Survey folks downtown or we've been survey businesses, you know, lots of folks are already. Engaged either with the city or through the chamber, but. But, but not some of the communities that we really do want to hear from, like low-wage employees or people that are using transit. It to come into downtown to work because it can't afford to live in Bothell. And it's really hard enough to do community engagement well. And so to even. Hear from those communities, it, it takes a plan. And it takes resources. And some of those are just unknowns for us right now. And as Steve mentioned before, even, you know, we're, we're talking about transit impacts. We're really thinking long-term. And so. It is, it's difficult for us to give you the data that we know you need. Um, but. If, if council would like a, a more carefully planned out. Community engagement strategy and would like for us to present a plan that shows the different stakeholders, or perhaps you've heard a lot from people in the community. Um, perhaps you don't, don't need further engagement. I guess that's maybe what we're looking for.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. Guess I'm kind of wondering what, what your definition of equity is here. Um, because it appears to be that it's low income and race. But I would argue there's an equity um argument to be made about pedestrians versus cars. And where the priority is and people's safety and accessibility. Um, and so I don't quite buy the equity argument. I think it's. Um, not well thought through, and um. I think there are other aspects of equity we should be talking about rather than presumptions about who uses transit. Um, not that that's not an issue, but um, I, I think. We are a society that puts cars above all else. And I think one thing that the closure of Main Street has taught us. Is that our citizens, our residents are craving safe places, safe harbors um from cars. Um, and I, I just think that's something that is not being considered when we talk about equity. And so um. I, I think that's a lot, a lot of guess, guesswork on our part. Um, in terms of equity being an, an issue, that would be a con um. For closing Main Street. Um. And I guess um, the other thing I, I'm curious about is when, when um we talked, you talked to businesses about. Um, the seven that are not in favor. Have we done any studies in terms of the amount of increased traffic? Um, because we have parking on both sides of Main Street behind the building, so parking doesn't. To me, that doesn't make a lot of sense that that's an issue unless it's something specific like a handicap parking space. And then I guess I would ask, have we, have we looked at potential solutions? Um, we have. Um, designated uh. Dis- disabled parking spots in parking lots. Is it possible to have designated parking spots perhaps on a hundred and first? That's right around the corner. To, as a, as a possible solution. Uh, so I. I guess I'm just curious how much we've looked at. Um. What the real issues are and how to solve them rather than presupposing what the best thing is to do. Um, and I understand, you know, we, like you said, we didn't have a lot of community engagement, but I guess I, I have an overall belief. That this is a net positive for our community, and I, I just. I think with that standpoint, I would like to work on how do we improve? Um. Something that in, in my book is a net positive. How do we just make it work better for, for more people? Um, so that's my input thinking.
Thank you, Councilmember Dor. Some very good um inputs and insight. Um, I, I do want to clarify, and I probably wasn't clear when I was speaking earlier. Um. We do believe that um we are transit partners and um. I think do believe that. Transit users um are. Or I will say this, that transit is very critical to certain communities. And I think there is data that supports that, that transit users often are. Communities of color. Low-wage employees, um, students. I'm not the expert on that. Um, but you're absolutely right. We don't know. What that actual, it, we don't know exactly what the transit impacts are or what that. Impact is to downtown Bothell or to the city of Bothell or to the Bothell community. You're absolutely right. Um, and I um, I. I don't know um that we have done much engagement with the Main Street businesses. I mean, we have talked to them. Um, I, I don't, you know, they completed the survey, so um I just take their feedback for what it is. Um, so we could absolutely um learn a little bit more from them, dig into some of those comments that they provided and maybe learn a little bit more about. You know, why they listed those as concerns. And I, I do know we have, well. I'll, I'll, maybe I'll let um other folks in the city addresses, but I, I don't think we've really addressed the parking challenges. Because we haven't quite learned what those parking challenges really were for the downtown businesses yet, so.
Councilmember Zornz.
Thank you, Becky. Is this a place to give thoughts or is it strictly questions?
Yes.
Thank you. So one thing that I'm impressed on, first off, our staff. I'm a number one fan. I mean, to just sit there and be able to be flexible and. And step in and help out with technical difficulties and I just, I was.
Sitting in my boss's chair right now. It's a little awkward for me.
I was just sitting there watching and marveling at how smoothly and seamlessly you just made it happen. It was great. Um, so thank you, thank you for all the thought and the conversations that you've invested with us on this. Um. I have a few thoughts. Um, this summer I talked to a lot of people, a lot of people. On all points, points of Bothell, north, south, east, west. And universally, except for maybe a small handful, people love Main Street being closed. I love Main Street being closed. Um, I'm not gonna hate on, I'm not gonna hate on cars. I think everybody here at the dais has cars and. We, we need transportation to keep our world moving and churning. But. Um, do they need to drive that piece of Main Street? Uh, you know, I don't know. Parking, parking is an issue, but I think it's, I think it's related to, not related to Main Street. I think it's related to, I go down. When I go downtown to park at night in downtown, there are zero spaces. Because all the going-home traffic has gobbled up all available street parking. And um, that's a separate issue of how, how are we going to manage that, manage that? Um, I don't think that piece is germane necessarily to what parking. We have specifically on Main Street. As far as equitable, um. Equity, the first thing that comes to mind is equity for the businesses. Um, the accessibility, being able to drop off people. Um, drop off people for services, drop off kids for classes. Um, that, that's. I, you know, I don't. Figuratively speaking, I don't think we throw those businesses under the bus. How do we make it a, um, how do we accommodate them? I, you know, I've talked about bumping in. Um, at the crosswalks and allowing those ends of the street to be drop-off points. Um, but that's not my day job. That's just me eyeballing it and say, you know, stating an obvious question. Um, I don't think it's. Fair to allow restaurants to take up big chunks. Of the territory of, of that beautiful concrete that sits as Main Street right now. I think that needs to be open and available for everyone to use. So that gets us to another problem. I do a lot of walking around downtown. And I think we had an email where someone said it's a ghost town during the day on Main Street. And, and, and they're right. It's, it is a ghost town on Main Street during the day. I think it's going to be better as it gets warm, it warms up, but it's pretty, pretty, pretty empty. And is it the best use? I don't have an answer to that, that question, but if we close Main Street, we have to make it pretty. We have to be able to invest and make it pretty so that it's not a ghost town, so that people can come down. And find comfortable places to be and still allow for things like emergency vehicles to come through and Fourth of July parade to happen. So. That, there's that question. Um. I think the last piece on it. That I sit and I think in. that I sit and I think in my head is money. Where, who, where are we going to take the money out to pay back for the improvements that went on Main Street? Do we take it out of parks? I don't think so. Do we take it out of public safety? That would be a bad idea. So where, where does that come? I don't have the answer. That's a conversation we have to, to have. Which leads me to this idea, and I'm going to toss it out, toss it out, and you are more than welcome to shoot it down. I ran it past Steve and he said, there is a hazard that comes with this. And here's my, here's my idea. Turning so that we don't have to pay back that million debt is to make it a one way street. If we were to make it a one way street, that would allow wiggle room, that would allow bikes to go through, that would allow scooters to go through. That would allow, if there's parking, those flex spaces aren't being used, that would allow people to park where, if there's a flex space open. And it would get us off the hook, I think. Another question to answer, would it get us off the hook of having to pay back that money? And then we'd have the bollards in place and we could close it down for special events. And initially I was thinking a one way eastbound. Going uphill, people will tend to speed less evidently. I'm not one of those people, but evidently there is a, well, who doesn't speed these days? But evidently one way streets, according to our traffic people, there's a tendency for people to speed on one way streets. So if we have pedestrians, maybe not such a good idea. It is just one short block. But there is that idea. I'm tossing it out. What do you think about a, a one way street that gets intermittently closed? And you got good ideas to shoot it down, have at it. But, but that's that best happy medium that I have for that.
Interim City Manager Lenhart, are there other staff presentations or have we reached the end of the staff presentations?
I had a, a finish up as far as what staff is asking for this evening, if you'd like me to, to toss it out there.
Councilmember McNeil had his hand up. I want to make sure that he gets a chance to speak if he'd like to.
I'll yield the floor and, and wait.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, so staff proposed two options. And I didn't mention at the beginning of my presentation that this, this item begins on page forty seven of your council packet. So for anyone following along at home. But there are two options that staff included in the agenda bill. One was for intermittent closures, in which case, so kind of along the lines of what Steve Markawa spoke about is, you know, during non-peak times and particularly once the bollards are installed, it'll be much easier to do it. And similar to what Kirkland did in Park Lane during the pandemic, whether it's weekends or, you know, through the summer, if that, that would end up working. Or the, and if, if council chose that option, staff would come back with the intermittent closure plan, which could even include, you know, leaving the ecology blocks in place through the summer, for example. The other option that staff sees is the permanent closure, in which case staff would come back to council with a budget request for both the refund of money, the federal grants that were gained by the city to make the improvements. And also to fund mitigation plan essentially and work with stakeholders to, as staff put it, fund a permanent closure and mitigation plan to safely and aesthetically close Main Street and identify any potential mitigation for long-term impacts on transit, emergency response, and the UW Bothell Cascade Campus. And then also fund any closure and mitigation implementation that came out of that study. So staff is seeking direction on one of those two options. Or if there's another option that council would like staff to explore. We are specifically seeking direction. We have recommendations that are associated with either one of those options. One of them is to reinstate the public area use permit process and associated fees. And with that, including moving the private use of that block of Main Street back to the flex zones as, as we did pre-COVID. So those are two recommendations that staff has. And in addition to either intermittent or permanent closure, staff would also like feedback from council about our ability to reopen that block of Main Street for the Fourth of July parade. And I would say that staff's recommendation would be to do so. And if, like I said, if the interest was in re-closing it after that, we could do that. So, so thank you, Mayor, for that opportunity. And we stand by for additional questions.
Councilmember McNeil, would you like to go now?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for closing that up. Aaron did answer a few of the questions that I was going to have. So yes, to the Fourth of July, I would be supportive of ensuring that we, we get back to some of our community engagement lining the streets, hopefully, and, and having, having that parade go down Main Street. I've, I've enjoyed that for many, many years and I know the community has as well. And it's, I look forward to having that back. As far as the, as far as the options are concerned, listening to kind of the presentation and listening to everybody kind of talk, one thing that comes to my mind is, is there, is there a way to find a balance in this opportunity to support the businesses down there, to continue to support, to give a place to gather, to have cultural events, things like that. But at the same time, be able to support our transit agencies, support traffic issues, support our colleges. Is there, it, it sounds like there's, there's potentially an option there to do, to do both. And it, and it kind of seems like an intermittent closure. So if we were, if we were to do in that type of a closure where it's intermittent and we put up bollards, would we lose, would we have to pay back the funding?
No, council member, we wouldn't, since it would still be effectively used as a roadway.
Okay, and then by doing that, I think I, I also heard you say that we could, we could put the, the eco blocks could stay for longer periods, maybe during the summer. If that happens, is that considered a permanent closure? If it's only for a three or four month summer period, is that considered permanent or still intermittent?
It's my understanding that would be considered intermittent. And I can ask Steve if he is still there, if he has any way in on, on that particular aspect.
I think the way the city would sell it is we're making optimal multi-use of our roadway. And typically a lot of roadways are designed, like you know, for peak hours. And that's a waste because during the other hours, you can use it for something else. So the intermittent closures would be using it when the road is not stressed, stressed during peak hours, which is when the problems come for transit. Typically, when you're in the holiday or the summertime, you're not going to see the volumes where transit, travel time and reliability is going to get affected. So closing Main Street, you would still have lower than peak volumes, hopefully on 185th. And that's what we would be shooting for. And so by, you could say you could close it half the time. You could still say it's a valid roadway because we're using it as a roadway for, when we need it. But we're using it for other things when we have the opportunity, like pedestrians and fairs and that kind of thing. So we really are kind of trying to push it toward the multi-use rather than just a single vehicular use.
Thank you. And the opportunity to do that on, on Main Street, do we have an opportunity to do this, to do something similar further down Main Street, maybe closer to City Hall? You know, like for Beer Fest and things like that, that we've done, cultural events to make it larger? Is there an opportunity for us to do temporary here, do temporary in other parts, larger sections? I mean, how, how, how would that, would that be something that's possible?
Well, I think the last that we left it in the fall was there was ARPA funding. And I think the council said that one interest they had was to use some of that funding to explore that, those opportunities. And I think the mayor was one person who wanted to look at Festival Street Plus. So I think we could look at all those opportunities. And one suggestion I have is, you know, if you do a temporary closure or you do a permanent closure, from a safety point of view, it pretty much looks the same. So by doing the interim closure, you really should be addressing permanent issues as well. Because when you close it intermittently, you still put, got to put up signs and say road closed ahead or go this way or that way and that kind of thing. Advanced signs, advanced warnings, essentially. So really, one thing we could include when we start the work on this is to essentially say, make sure that whatever options we come up with can also be used permanently. Because we all want to get there. It's just a matter of how we can get there without creating a lot of pain for transit. So, you know, things like starting TDM programs in the downtown, making sure we understand how traffic comes back after COVID because there's still going to be growth. But if we see things working in the advance, in the good, good way, we can close it more and more potentially until potentially maybe sometime down the road, you don't need it anymore because most people are out of their cars, most people are in transit, most people on bikes or something like that. That's kind of what I would propose from the technical side is look at all those options. We can certainly explore that during the planning phase of this initial bollard program. And you could consider whatever streets you would want to do. It will be a very interesting exercise because that one block of Main Street is fairly easy because there's no driveway there. Some of the other blocks are more difficult because you start cutting off private access to private parking lots. And you got to make sure that those property owners, whether it's the current owner or the future owner, is on board with everything. So we'd have to have those discussions. But there could potentially be more areas you could close off for different types of activities or to benefit different parts of downtown. Or my understanding, there are certain cities that probably close off a lot of their city at certain times. And it's a whole walkable. But again, that becomes difficult when you have local access. So somehow you have to work through those issues. Again, my recommendation, look at that whole spectrum when we go through this exercise.
Thank you, Steve. And is there, to make to these couple of recommendations that are on the table right now, is there a reason that we, if we did a temporary, then we could do permanent, it sounds like we could do that down the road. But is there a reason to make this decision quickly? Like, do we need to make this decision because we're opening back up? Or do we have time? You know, we, we heard about looking at things through DEI lens. We looked at transit agencies. You spoke about two minutes, every two minutes. You know, data is important, right? We want to, I think you want to inform us to make good decisions. And I feel like what I'm hearing also is that there's more information that we could, we can gain from further discussions. Is, is there a reason that we have to make this, this decision right now? And if, if so, would a temporary closure or intermittent closure be the best approach to face to a permanent, if that's the direction we want to go?
Again, I'm think like an engineer. I think if the decision is to close it and there's an immediate benefit to permanently close it, then we would close it and we would have to deal with the impacts on transit and try to figure that out and mitigate it as best we could. If there is a way to approach it practically, to like you say, get more information or maybe advance and work your way toward potentially in the long-term closure. And we think that's, the city thinks it's better to approach it that way and methodically. Again, one way, regardless of which decision is made today, staff is going to have to look at how to close that road, whether it's intermittent or permanent. And if the two look the same, in other words, let's say the permanent closure is still retractable bollards. Because at some point you want fire trucks to be able to get in there and fight a fire. Then those retractable bollards look the same as the intermittent one, where we may be closing it only on weekends or maybe in weekends and nights and during the summer. It probably would look fairly similar, or we could work toward them looking fairly similar. So the end game would be sometime in the future, you could still close it permanently. And we wouldn't spend any more money than we would do for intermittently. That's how I would look at it and propose that you look at it. But again, whether you need to close it now or sometime in the future, I think that's a call you need to make. I will give you a little history on Main Street. Prior to the downtown plan, we had looked at actually putting a signal at Main Street and 102nd. We found out that just dropping one signal wasn't going to work. We would probably have to do more to make it work. But we also didn't want to proceed with that because we felt like we're doing major roadway changes with the downtown plan. And we didn't know how that was going to affect the traffic ultimately. And so we decided we would wait, let traffic kind of be where it's going to be after we did all the road changes. And then move forward from there. And unfortunately, COVID is kind of doing something similar in the sense that it's affecting traffic patterns. Hopefully more people get out of the car because of telecommuting. And if that is proved to be true, we might have a better opportunity. But if it doesn't prove to be true, how will we handle that if it does affect transit? You know, so those are just some things we want you to think about when you're making your decision about how to work your way down toward this goal of closing Main Street.
Okay, thank you. And I do have one, one last question. We, we, the deputy mayor brought up an amazing opportunity, a lot EF and G. And it was brought up that potentially bring a closure down further to accommodate tying that all together. But what I, what I, what I think about is that, that area in which that opportunity is, and then I look at relation to Main Street, it appears that that lot area might be larger in scale. And if we were to do something there, is that pedestrian safe being along 522 and 527 on the corner? Is that type of an area pedestrian safe?
I think it is because it's a private property. It's surrounded by sidewalks and plant strips. And parking along the multi-way boulevard side as well. I think you would have to think about, I think the deputy mayor's drawing had fences, which makes sense because you have little kids running out between food trucks. So we would have to think about things like that, just like any other private development would. So I think you could make it safe. You may have to do more in order to address some of these safety issues depending on the type of use you have. And if you have a lot of kids around food trucks, you may want to put a fence there because as a parent myself, I would have worried about having to pay for my food and watch my kid without running out between the trucks and losing them somewhere. So that just might make everybody feel better, but it is an expense.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Steve, Becky and Aaron for a wonderful presentation. It's, it's, I mean, it's, it's a tough, tough discussion. And we are at a place right now that Bothell, twenty years ago, is not the same as Bothell today. You know, it's probably not going to be the same in About 20 years. So what we're trying to think of is like, how do we want Bothell to be in 20 years, not how it is today? And it sounds like from this discussion that we're going on, there are more questions than answers. The only given, the only given actually was that the people who go there and people who visualize it, love it, that residents, they love it. People love to do this. Again, like I mentioned in my mini presentation earlier, people love to go to, you know, other, other cities that have walkable spaces because of the walkable spaces. People loved country village because it was a walkable space. Yes, you had to enter in a car and you park on the side and then you just walk everywhere, right? So the, the need for such a, what do I say, a service or amenity in the city is there, there's a need. Now the question is, how does that, the questions that I brought up, like how does that affect transit? Well, we had the pandemic that changed everything. So are the numbers in 2019 the same as the numbers in 2022? Are they the same numbers in 2023 and 2024? I don't know. So that's, that's a question, the DEI question. There is, I mean, legitimate concerns that DEI, the transit affects, you know, marginalized communities the most. Well, is that really the case for us? And what are the numbers before or the numbers after? Have we done a study in that? And we haven't, I know, I'm just, you know, I'm just saying things. So a concern about increased trapping on 185th, well, that's a concern about increased traffic on 185th, well, that's probably happening today, if that's the case. There is, Transit Partners believe transit is critical to certain communities, we addressed that. Lack of community engagement, that's a big question mark still. We need to do, you know, a good study. We surveyed a lot of people, we need to survey even more people, because I don't know if it was, uh, the, the, uh, I keep saying the mayor's ones. All that is diehard. Councilmember Zornz mentioned, uh, there's visitors and there's residents, and there's a lot of stakeholders. And how can we address those, those, uh, those needs over there also? How do we increase the number of people who come here? The main thing that Steve mentioned when he opened, the main goal of downtown is to create a dense and walkable core. However, all the statements that were made were against that, that goal, because we're trying to optimize for, and I mean, in these engineering terms, optimize for, you know, vehicles, yes, buses and all that is there, but I, with a one-lane street going each way, I mean, you're gonna have bus problems regardless. Unless you expand that and make a BRT-like lane, or whatever you call it. So there's gonna be issues there. Uh, Main Street, the street is closed today. Are we taking alternatives? How is that affecting counts? Where's, we're talking about a couple of hours in the morning, a couple of hours in the evening. We're optimizing all of our closures and openings because of those two things and how traffic goes there. I would say like, everybody, it sounds, from hearing everybody here on council, it sounds like there is a lot more questions than answers. And I would love for us to delay this, because, uh, to delay this decision until we get more information that is maintaining the status quo until we have more information. With the exception of a Fourth of July parade. And I would, I would propose a motion, but I see more hands there, so I can take another round. The second round, I guess.
Councilmember Aldrich, are you going in for round two? I don't remember. Have you spoken yet?
I don't know which part counts as what. I did ask a question of Becky back when she was presenting, so does that count? I don't know, you tell me.
I think we're still in that same thing. I, I am gonna go and ask some questions before we jump into seconds, because I, I hate going last, and I, I have questions. You know, I met the deputy mayor on Sunday around noon on Main Street, and there were thirty, by, by a rough count, and it's hard, because people are coming in and out, but I counted thirty-six people in spaces previously only occupied by cars, and twenty-four people on the sidewalks. You know, sixty people on that block didn't take up a ton of space, because people don't take up that much space. The adjacent block, there were five people on a table outside the sushi restaurant, and there were eight parked cars. And there was traffic driving through them. On the pedestrian street, there were lots of people walking through regularly, like people with their kids, riding their bikes. And yeah, at times it's a ghost town, at times it's empty. But that's the case for every block downtown, regardless of if it's been pedestrianized or not. And, and in fact, and every time I go down there, there's a ton more people on that block than there are in any other block around. And, and ultimately, before I get into questions, the, the community loves this. It's overwhelming, the comment that we get from the community, and, and I really think the community needs to be our north star in this. So getting to talking about some of what staff has brought up tonight, I don't understand centering this conversation around transit. Main Street is not the transit corridor. Main Street, if we give it back to cars, will only be for cars. And I, I know the problems result from, you know, theoretical increased traffic and congestion on 185th. Have any of the transit agencies brought forward a concern with this, or is this just something where thinking might happen?
With the amount of transit we're having on 185th, they actually asked if we could close 185th to general purpose traffic and just use it for transit only. And we said no, because we only have two streets going through downtown, and Main Street can't take all the cars. So they were, we're already concerned about getting transit through, because we're wonderfully successful, we've worked very hard. Council members all the way down to staff to get a lot of transit here, and we are gonna get it. So we're trying to make sure that their travel time and their reliability is at least consistent. And I understand that wanting to service cars, unfortunately, 185th must take cars and transit. We can't just put a bat lane there, it just doesn't work there. It would be too wide, it would, you know. So if we want transit to service downtown, fortunately, yes, we have to make sure traffic works as well.
I don't understand, how is the road being a certain width? How does that make it not appropriate for a bat lane?
If you want to close 185th to cars, and you want to close Main Street, then essentially you're shutting down Main Street to any car traffic at all, east and west. They would have to go on 522, or they'd have to go through the neighborhood to the north. The other way to do it is, again, you put more cars on 185th, especially if they're trying to get across the bridge on 102nd, or go north and south. They're gonna be taking right turns and left turns, and it's just those movements, and the amount of cars just take more time. And so during those peak hours, there's delay there. They're waiting in line to make right turns, and that just slows down the bus.
So.
It doesn't happen as much off-peak hours.
If we pedestrianize Main Street, and the traffic apocalypse happens to transit, is there anything stopping us to, from reacting to these theoretical future problems then?
Some of the things, some of the things that could occur, and we could try to mitigate it. But again, it depends on the amount of traffic that gets generated. So again, if the picture is rosy, and people stay out of their cars after COVID, then the amount of mitigation, we would have to do this less, and the concern might be less. But like I said, right now, transit is spending millions of dollars on 185th just to get two minutes of travel time savings. And if you can imagine just a few more cars waiting in line to take a right turn down 102nd, that's gonna delay them ten, fifteen, twenty seconds. That just, you know, starts eating into your travel time. So let me give you a couple of examples of what could happen. And this could happen anyway, because like I said, we're putting a lot of transit on 185th, even if we keep Main Street open. We might lose all parking on 185th, which may not be a big concern. We may actually have to make sure it's a three-lane facility, not a two-lane facility, because we're still trying to make sure a fire can get through in a good amount of time and not get delayed for safety and life, life safety. We may have to do things to make sure that that right turn movement from 185th down 102nd and 104th doesn't delay everybody. The reason why it's being delayed right now is we have four-way stops at 183rd and Main Street in Kays.
So what, Steve, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you real quick, because my question was actually, is there anything keeping us from changing should these terrible situations that you're describing happen? Like, is there any reason we need to react to those things now? Is there anything preventing us from reacting to those things in the future?
As long as I think we're reasonable that we may have to go backwards if transit is affected and everybody's not happy with it.
Yeah, but we will have options. If these bad things, if these bad things happen, we will have options in the future, correct?
Not necessarily, no. Because the amount of cars, there's just a limited amount of cars that can get on 185th. And I was trying to tell you what we could potentially do to help mitigate it, but even then, it might not be enough.
Yeah, but I mean, we can make it a bat lane if we want in the future. We could reopen Main Street if we wanted in the future, and, you know, give more capacity down there. Like, it seems to me that, like, there's no reason we need to worry about a future problem until it's a problem. Like, I don't see anything that is keeping us from opening Main Street back up to cars and giving it back to cars if these things happen and we think that's the best solution. So I, I guess I just don't understand why we have to deal with theoretical future problems today.
So on day of opening, once we figure out how it's working and how COVID comes back in a few years, when they have opening for all the transit to move there, we take the car counts and everything, and there is a delay, and emergency access does have an issue. If council is being flexible with it, and we can go backwards if we have to, I think that's an option.
Cool.
But we have to understand we would be going backwards at that time because of the impact to, you know, those two things. If those two things are important, yeah.
That, totally, no, that's, that's the answer I was looking for. There's nothing stopping us from taking this decision back at some point in time. If we do take Main Street away from people and give it back to cars, can we say for sure that traffic congestion won't be a problem that affects transit on 185th?
I think you can, modeling is all planning. Like you say, it's somewhat theoretical, but it's also a tried and true planning tool. And those planning tools are showing that it would be a problem in the future if we get the traffic load.
Yeah. Okay. And, and I mean, and that's, that's fair. And then, then we will have a, a future problem to make a decision around then. I, I just think if we keep responding to concerns about future traffic by giving more space to cars, we're just creating the future that we're scared of. Like, we're just making it easier for people to drive, and that's gonna make them do more of it. I, I liked what the deputy mayor said earlier. You know, we need to think big picture about what we want to be as a city, and I just don't see how hand wringing about traffic is gonna help us get there.
You, if I can say one more thing, the modeling that we've been doing has assumed it's been open. So there hasn't been any modeling done with it closed. So I can't even guarantee you that it would work on day one.
Right. If we just don't know, that's fine. I mean, that's, that's more in line with my preconceptions, is that we just don't know. Thank you, Steve. Have a couple of questions about equity. I really kind of don't understand centering this conversation around equity either, because the entire equity argument seems to be centered around transit. And I just don't see how taking space away from people to give to cars is gonna make transit better. But moreover, Steve mentioned the primary transit concern is peak hour traffic. You know, those are commuters. And people commuting in cars are generally demographically wealthier, wider, and more male than people who don't commute in a car. So if we're gonna apply the equity lens as a reason to not keep Main Street open, why don't we apply that same equity lens toward our transportation? Like, there seems to be a disconnect here.
I'll take a shot at that, and I think the response was, we understand you don't want people in cars, but unfortunately, transit has to use the same roadway as the cars. So if the cars are backed up, transit gets backed up.
It's, it's not that I don't want people in cars. I, I drove here tonight. Like, I am not an anti-car advocate. It's just that when we genuflect to cars in everything that we do, we create a system that doesn't even work well for people driving in cars. Like, and, and I'm just, I'm concerned that we're making discussion or decisions, or talking about making decisions about, you know, what we want our downtown to be. And the biggest concern is, is future traffic, which honestly, it's gonna happen anyway.
And I'm, again, I'm trying to clarify, it's not necessarily future traffic. It's the models we know for the long-term plan, we know it's not gonna work. We have not tried the day of opening model with Main Street closed. And like I said, they're spending millions of dollars on 185th to get travel time improvements of about two minutes.
Okay.
If we start loading it up with more cars, that two minutes is gonna be gone very quickly. And they're not gonna meet their targets of trying to get you or people in the bus from Bothell to the link station in X amount of time reliably and consistently.
Oh, and I don't actually remember if I got an answer to the question. Have any of the transit agencies brought up concerns with the pedestrianized Main Street?
I've been asked about it, but we have specifically, like Becky said, it's kind of a double-edged sword to go asking questions. So we can go ask questions. I've been asked by a couple of agencies already about how this is going, but we haven't tried to drag them into the conversation.
Yeah, no, I just asked if they brought it up, not if we'd asked them anything.
They brought up not having cars on 185th, because they're concerned about travel times. So if we put more cars in there, my assumption is they're gonna be more concerned about it.
But they haven't brought up the pedestrianized Main Street as a concern.
But closing Main Street will cause more cars.
No, no, I, but have they brought that up? That is my question. I know you've mentioned that other part a couple of times.
I'm not sure what your question is. It's kind of a question of.
Have the transit agencies brought up the pedestrianized Main Street as a concern for their service?
I would say yes, because today I got a question, what, what is council doing tonight, and what are they addressing? So I think they are concerned, yes.
Okay. But they haven't brought up any actual concerns. They just asked what we're discussing tonight.
They haven't been given an opportunity.
Okay. Quick question for the interim city manager. To my knowledge, and, and then I got the email from you the other day, the sum of our discussions around the grant that we think we might have to return is that we've gotten one email that says we might have to, the day of the last time we discussed this in December. Has there been any other conversations around that?
I'll answer that one as well, sorry.
Okay.
So WashDOT is a state agency that administers federal highway funds. So they're the representative of federal highways. And if they have a question and they are unsure, they go talk to their federal highways contact. So the email that we got, which is in writing, essentially says, federal highways gives money for twenty-year periods of your, there's a, there's kind of a, these are the strings that are attached to federal money. You have to have it in use for twenty years. If you do not have it in use for twenty years, and by in use, it's not closed to vehicles, you pay the prorated amount of the time that you used it, and that's their decision.
And have we explored what that looks like, or asked any questions around, like, an exception to that or a percentage of that, because the Main Street is obviously much more than just that one block? Like, have, have there been any other discussions to try to mitigate that impact for the city?
No, we can.
Okay. Cool. And, and I'll, I'll stop asking questions now. I could do this all night, and nobody wants to listen to that. But, but ultimately, like, it's been about two years or almost two years, and it just really seems like we don't have any of the information that we need to make a permanent decision on any of these factors, and our community overwhelmingly does not want it to return to the way that it was. I don't, I, I, the deputy mayor brought up, you know, kind of continuing the status quo. And I, I like that, but at the same time, I'd also like to actually do some work to try to solve some of the concerns that you guys have brought up. Because right now, they're pretty much all theoretical, and, and we could do some work to, to figure out how real some of those are. And, and I'd like to do that. The other thing, it was councilmember Zornz brought up, in setting the, either the Ballards or the Eco blocks a little bit, and create a load unload zone for people to easily get dropped off. That seems like a really simple, easy solution that would solve some of the challenges for business. I'd also love to see a couple more ADA spots on the end. I know we put up one temporary ADA spot. But I'd like to see a couple more, because that's a, a concern some of the businesses have raised. I, I also think of the businesses that feel that they've been negatively impacted. I'd like to see us try to do things other than stopping this to help them out. And, and those are the things that I think we need to look at before we make a decision to either do this permanently or just stop. And I will now call on councilmember Dewar.
Uh, well, Mayor, you covered a lot of what I was gonna say. Starting with, if we're putting in Ballards, nothing's permanent. I would also like to know, how open does the street have to be for us? How often and how long does the street have to be open in order to not have to pay the million dollars? Or conversely, how long do we have to pay the million dollars? And I would just, I would say, you know, Bothell was one of the first cities in the region to close Main Street. And our success and what we saw happen kind of resonated with people. I mean, there are places closed in Ballard and Edmonds and lots of different places, because it was so universally seen to be a positive thing. And, you know, I don't know what their conversations are like, as far as making their situation permanent, but I'm sure it's similar. I also think we could talk about eliminating parking spots on 185th to make it wider. There is another road, 183rd, that cars could, could drive on. And I guess the, the last couple of things that I would, would say is that, yes, we should absolutely open it for July 4th. And I'm interested, and if we're concerned about gift of public funds, well, let's charge for those spaces that are being used. I mean, money is being made off of those spaces, and in large part, the pandemic's over. So I think it's completely fair to expect that that those businesses that are profiting from that space are now able to pay some sort of fee. And I don't know what that fee structure looks like, but it seems reasonable to me at this point that we would do that, and that should address, you know, equity concerns. I, the problem is, when we talk about equity in businesses, you know, all businesses have different situations, depending on where they're located, and they pay for whatever amenities. for whatever amenities they have or don't have. Um, so I, I'm having a little bit of difficulty with that, with that argument. Um, we did try to open up parking spots around the city to address, um, the ability to have outdoor seating. Um, but I think overall, we should make our decision based on what our goal is. And then start working to solving the problems, um, that are making it difficult to make it permanent. Um, but I, I think overall, it's a good thing. I'm in favor of closing it um, for the foreseeable future until such time that there's such a big issue that uh, with traffic or whatnot, then, then we need to address it again. I don't wanna presuppose problems that may or may not exist. Uh, and that can't be mitigated somehow. So I think I answered all the questions that were on the list. So option two is my, um, is my preferred choice. And I think I mentioned everything that was requested. But I, I, you know, I appreciate, I did wanna mention, I appreciate, um, some suggestions from council members Lawrence. I, you know, in, in setting the, the ballards or whatnot. Um, I, I think, uh, one-way street would be terrible. I just think that it wouldn't, it would defeat both purposes, right? It wouldn't really help that much with traffic. And it would not be very safe, um, which is really the whole point, is to have some sort of safe haven for pedestrians. So, um, I guess that's where I stand. I'll let someone else talk.
Interim city manager, did you wanna jump in real quick?
Just had a quick question for council member Doer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, uh, thank you for the guidance on the fees and Fourth of July. Uh, the last question that I would have for you and if other council members could weigh in on this as well is uh, the ability to move the private use back to the flex zones and out of the, the middle of the area.
Um, I, I guess I don't really have a huge opinion on that. If we're closing it, it seems like there's lots of spots or lots of space there. Um, I could be probably convinced either way, to be honest.
I think part of it is that if we do truly want to make it a, a useful, a usable community space, that to have them out of that space would be, would be helpful. And also for, for the Fourth of July parade, for example. But I think also for festival use and, uh, special events to have that, the use of the full area would be great.
That makes sense. And I've seen a lot of uses, you know, dads playing catch with their kids down the middle, which is just so fun. And then when scooters come back and all that, I, I, I see your point. So you've convinced me.
Thanks.
I would just say that, um, as long as it takes to get through our permit process for a special event, that seems like something we could probably react to down the road to. So, um, sorry, sorry about that. Um, council member Alderks.
All right. I really do appreciate this conversation and, um, and all the council members weighing in. And, um, I realized that one of the requests from staff is like, what direction do we need to take? Um, in regards to these proposals. And what I'm hearing, um, and is that we don't necessarily need to make the decision to permanently close Main Street tonight. Um, there is strong support from our community and we have the need for more information. And so if I could summarize the more information requests that, um, I'm hearing, that I am in support of, they are as follows. You ready, interim city manager? Cool. The, figure out an equity process. Uh, decide what that process is going to look like and, um, and, you know, make a plan to present to council members, uh, specifically what that would look like. Instead of saying, we are concerned that there may be equity, like, problems that we can't anticipate. Let's, let's come up with a plan. Specifically, I would like to understand impact on, uh, BIPOC business owners, um, in the surrounding area. Next is, um, ADA spots. Um, I very much would like to see action taken on, on that by inserting the ballards so that we could have a drop-off zone. Um, or, and/or, um, a couple of ADA spots at the end of Main Street, uh, for people who are, you have mobility challenges. Um, this is a follow-up question from the TIP presentation that we had a couple of weeks ago, which is, we don't know what the traffic impacts. So we don't, uh, of of traffic only on one eighty fifth and not traffic with, um, Main Street and one eighty fifth open. So the last time a traffic study was done, Main Street was open. So this seems like it could be the opportunity that it, before we make a decision to permanently close Main Street or open it up again, that we could look and see what the impacts on one eighty fifth have been and are currently with, um, Main Street closed. Uh, that might be a very naive question in the sense of, let's just do a traffic study. That might be a more complicated cost-intensive, labor-intensive process than I anticipate. But I think it's an appropriate time to bring that, that, uh, question up again. Uh, I would like to see, uh, so next thing is I would like to see streetery fees be, um, be proposed. So if, you know, instead of allowing our businesses to have this, uh, private benefit that is, uh, through, you know, public, public funds, that we could figure out what, what it might cost. I do support moving, um, moving the streeteries into the flex zones mainly because of aesthetic purposes. Uh, there are times when I walk down Main Street and I see how, how large the streeteries have grown and how much they encroach on the middle of the street. And I just think it would look neater and more pulled together and like, you know, smarter and a more jaunty place to go if they were a little more contained and a little more well-maintained and well-kept. Which leads me to the question of, can we develop some like guidelines on what they're supposed to look like so that we can say that, um, you know, this area, and I'm not saying that there's any one particular, you know, any air, any particular streetery right there now that I think violates this. But if it's looking a little shabby, if it's looking a little not well-kept, can we say, hey, we need you to check this out and make some improvements? Is there some kind of a process for that? One is, and I apologize for this length of my comments. Last one is, and this may be an unpopular opinion. I'm not entirely convinced that we need the Fourth of July parade to go down Main Street. And I don't necessarily think it is worth the time and effort. Or would be enjoyable for the public to have streeteries and flex areas, which would then preclude people from being able to see the parade. It would make the parade a little tighter and, uh, more challenging to pass through Main Street. The, uh, effort and expense of having to move those eco blocks, I just think it's a big hassle. And I would like to make a pitch for having the Fourth of July parade go down one eighty third in front of our municipal court, in front of our, uh, police department, in front of City Hall. That those are the municipal gems of our crown, um, as an example. That when I, that when we think about, you know, our city and how it serves our, our community, those are, that's the sort of the center, that's the heart of, of our city at this point in terms of how we serve our community. Main Street is a delightful place for pedestrians. And we do not need to lose that. Um, and I also appreciate the, um, this, the point made by our deputy mayor that when we lost Country Village, we lost that walkable, enjoyable place to be. So this is the opportunity for us to maintain and preserve a space that sort of maybe doesn't replace Country Village in our hearts, but provides an alternative for us that we can able, that we're able to sort of move on and heal together with, with this new area. I apologize if that is a lot. And I see your hand, interim city manager. So please take a chance to respond.
I just wanted to address this streetery fee. So we do have a fee in place that, um, that's one of the uh, points of direction that staff is asking for tonight is to reinstate those fees for that use. So thank you. Um, and Nick Stru, Parks and Rec Director is here to speak to the Fourth of July if anyone wants, wants to hear his, his input on that. Um, I, I think that staff would have concerns with putting it on one eighty third again. But, um, if that doesn't gain any legs, then we don't need to belabor that.
All right, I'll jump in again, um, and get to some of these fees. I have no problem with that. I just wanna make sure that they are low enough that they don't preclude businesses from doing it. Because we all win when businesses operate and can create spaces for people. I'm concerned about moving businesses out of the street right now with nothing to replace it with. Because we also benefit from twenty, thirty people sitting on the street eating that either won't go inside yet because the pandemic's not over, just because we're over it. And, um, or just extra space. So, um, I, I'm, I'm concerned about taking that away 'cause, 'cause really I think we benefit when we have more people there eating, drinking, shopping, enjoying themselves. And there's just not space on the sidewalk. So if we're gonna keep it open, I'd like to keep it open. And, and obviously we can change something down the road. There's been discussion between council over Alderks and council member, um, or deputy mayor Alcabra about Country Village. I mean, what if we put a temporary outdoor market hall on Main Street at some point in time? Like, there's, there's lots of different options and things we could do down the road. I just don't see those as realistic yet. And I don't wanna take away an asset to both the community as well as our bottom line, because those people eating in there are paying tax revenue. Um, Fourth of July, I, um, I don't care if it goes down Main Street or not. We could do something where it goes down one eighty third, hits the municipal gyms, hangs a left and then goes down Main Street and down that last block. I, I'm also not really concerned about, you know, having folks take their seating areas down for a day. Um, I, I don't really care. And I feel bad because there weren't any hands up. So I talked and now there's a bunch of hands up and I'm supposed to wait until the end. So apologies to everyone. Um, council member Manke.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I haven't weighed in yet, so this is my first round of weigh-in. So please excuse, um, my lateness. But I wanted to listen and hear what others had to say. I like the closed space. When asked about it last year, I was all for it. I, um, I think with the pandemic, we needed that space, the businesses, the restaurants needed that space. And it was fantastic. And now that I am, we're, we're considering this full-time, getting more data, which I think we have some data now from staff, um, has made me look at it a little bit differently than I had before. I think it's really helpful. And in thinking about this over the past week or two, um, since seeing it on the agenda, talking with various community members, reading, you know, what's been provided to us and, um, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of emotion over this, uh, this decision, which rightly so, it's a, you know, it's an important decision we're making. But really what stuck out to me overall was the lack of, um, public process around it, the lack of um, information gathering from the community and, and really having an open public process about it rather than just, you know, taking in what people were providing to us. So also in that, in that same vein, um, I think looking at it with the DEI lens, as we talked about, I know there were some questions about why are we looking at it through like a racial equity or, you know, transit type lens? But I think it is important to do that. As Shannon says, we, we don't build anything without them. This is a public space that we're building. We're building a community gathering place and we really need to look at this full scoped. There's not a community group that shouldn't be spoken to, as she said. I mean, she, it's interesting, I had a lot written down and she was hitting on a lot of what I was thinking. So um, I'm gonna hit through the, the pieces that haven't been mentioned yet. I think, you know, we need to talk to all of our community groups, whether it's race or ethnicity, um, whether it's disabled residents, our college students that are just down the street, retirement community, also just down the street, um, residents of various income levels. I think we should step back and take a look at who's using this space currently. Um, do we know, is it a certain socioeconomic status or a certain age group that's using it? Those restaurants are not cheap and I love them. Everybody knows I love the Biden so much. But, you know, to go there frequently is very expensive. So the folks using those things, yes, they're paying tax revenue. I love it. Um, as much as that, as we can get, great. They're supporting the businesses. Again, excellent. As much of that as we can get, fantastic. But are we building a space for those types of people? Are we building it for everybody? So we really, really do need to, to look at that. We also need to look at, um, those businesses and the adjacent businesses, the housing and the adjacent housing. We need to look at the transit agencies. We need to openly ask them and be transparent with them about what we're looking at doing and, and really getting their feedback on that. I'm a bus rider. Um, buses and transit times are very important to people who utilize that transit. I've ridden buses for ten years and I can tell you, if it's not reliable, people will not take it. They will get back in their car and take a chance in their car instead. Because they know that they're not gonna be on a bus route and stuck in the bus as long as the bus takes, they're gonna take every side road imaginable. I've had three-hour commutes before. It is horrible. So we really do need to be transparent with them. We need to talk to them, ask them questions, let them know what we're thinking. They're investing millions of dollars and, um, as Mr. Morikawa mentioned, we've had council members present and in the past that have worked very hard to get these transit agencies into our city. We've got three transit agencies. They're bringing many buses to our city. And to say that we'll address the problem if and when it occurs, that's, that's a huge problem. You don't, you don't look at things that I don't believe in that way. You wanna look at what, what may occur. Um, what do the models say? What do the trusted, tried and true tested models say? We need to, we need to really consider that. So, uh, they are a valued stakeholder, just as the colleges down the street. We haven't talked to them and how they feel about that. Um, I think there's a lot of other groups and if we do make that push for um, collective community feedback and a big, open, public process, I think we will get the answers to the questions that we're seeking. And I would highly recommend that we do that. I, I wouldn't be able to support a permanent closure without that personally. Um, the, the balance of intermittent closures, I think is a an easier decision to make if we're going to make one right now. Um, that gets the best of both worlds, but a permanent closure, we really, really need to stand firm and do what we say we're going to do with our goals. And, um, I would like to get more information on that. So all, with all of that said, in terms of staff's requested feedback, I'll just hit them real quick. Um, public use area permits, I think we should go back to that. Things are opening back up. We have a process in place. Um, the mandates have been lifted as of this point. So I think it's time to get back to our standard procedure. I would like to see them back in the flex zones, um, and outside of their, the regular area of Main Street. If we do allow them to keep expanding into the street, I think we should, uh, determine what a, a fair price for that is. To council member Alderks' point, it's a use of public property and we're not allowed to give things like that away for free. So we do need to figure out what a, a reasonable value is for that. I, I also encourage people to play more ball in the street, um, walk with their families, markets if we wanna do that. Lots of, lots of use opportunities there. So those flex zones are fantastic. Everybody knows I hate them as parking spots. Uh, when they were first released and I parked in it for the first time, I just, I was incensed that we would even create such a thing. And learning that they were meant to be flex zones, um, made me very happy and makes a lot more sense. So, um, enough commentary on that. Fourth of July parade, I think Main Street's the best place for it. It's tradition. We all love tradition. Um, it's a grand place. Uh, businesses get more people coming in, um, with that. Although sidewalks are difficult to navigate, but I love, um, Main Street as a Fourth of July parade route. So those are the sum total of my comments. That's probably the only comment that I'm gonna make on this topic tonight. And I'll go ahead and yield the floor to the deputy mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, um, Mayor, and thank you, Ben. Uh, you know, saving the best for last. Looks like, uh, yeah, I agree. I, I think, um, I, I've, I, you know, I, I would like to propose a motion. Because, um, so that we can move ahead and, um, have a discussion and, you know, and so on. Because we're all, sounds to me like we're saying the same things. You know, we agree on a lot of things and, and we need more information to make decisions on the big, big issues. Um, so I will, uh, say that I moved to extend the temporary closure of Main Street until March thirty first, twenty twenty four, to conduct a pilot program to study the impacts on residents, visitors, businesses and other community stakeholders. But this also includes moving to flex zones, creating ADA parking, creating drop-off zones.
I haven't weighed in yet.
Yeah, if somebody seconds the motion, is speaking to the motion acceptable, Councilmember Zornz? To weigh in?
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just point of order. I think the Deputy Mayor does have a motion on the floor, but I believe that there was council members that still wanted to weigh in again. So I don't know if we want to give them the opportunity to weigh in.
No, we want to give them the opportunity to weigh in. Hey, Paul, are you kicking around?
Yep.
Is, what's the best way to deal with the motion on the floor, but also make sure that Councilmembers Zornz and Alderks get a chance to talk?
So based on parliamentary procedure, if someone makes a motion and it is seconded, then it is discussed and voted on, whether or not there are other people waiting to address it?
Got it. So if we, if nobody seconds that right now, then the Deputy Mayor can make that motion again after a couple of people talk, correct?
Correct.
All right. Deputy.
Sorry, I didn't know.
Oh, you're fine. I do not see a second for your motion, so hang on to that motion, and I'll call on Councilmember Zornz.
Okay, great motion. Eager to get back to it. Reinstating the permit? Yeah, yes. I think the last big tent is, if it hasn't come down today, it will be coming down. So the street will be opening up. Flex zones, I think we've already got that taken care of. Aren't we back to the way we've usually charged on that? And then, Fourth of July Parade. At one point, I had asked, it was with our previous city manager about actually using 183rd. And I think Nick can probably weigh in on it. My recollection of using 183rd for the fourth was there's, was some logistic problems of navigating some of the parade participants down 183rd. So my first guide is to stay on Main Street. And then, as far as permanent or intermittent, if we can keep the motion going, the momentum going, on putting ballards in place, and we can hold on making a permanent decision, that's my direction on that.
Councilmember Alderks.
So my apologies for putting my hand up, because this is really just a question for clarification. I feel like there might be some confusion. My understanding is that the flex zones are those parking spaces that are surrounded by concrete that I agree with Councilmember Manke are the worst thing to park in ever and are excellent uses for other, like for not cars. And that does not, the flex zone does not include the sidewalk. So we're not talking about, like, streeterys on the sidewalk. Is that correct?
It can use the sidewalk as well as the flex zone as long as there's enough space for ADA access between the sidewalk usage and the flex zone usage. So what the bind, for example, has done, that is fully acceptable even when Main Street, if Main Street were reopened, that's what our standard public area use permit has looked like historically.
Great, thank you. And last thing, I just want, I really do appreciate the last point that Councilmember Zornz brought up. But of course, it's getting late and I'm getting tired. So whatever that was, I liked that, and I don't remember what it is now. So if you would like to restate it, go for it, but, oh, man.
Just has to do with ballards, keeping that when I'm going.
Thank you. Yeah, ballards would probably serve our purposes better than the eco blocks. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor.
I shall yield to Councilmember McNeil until he's done, and I can go after him.
All right, sounds good. And you're going to have to wait for me once more, too.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So a question that I had in terms of city manager, do we have enough? Do you have enough direction, or do you need me to continue to weigh in on? I am for the permit fee, flex space, and then, as somebody alluded to, the tradition of Main Street. It's part of, embedded in the history of this community. So I am all for having it on Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I mean, really, just the last thing that I want to say is, like, I think that we have the staff expertise to manage the concerns that have been brought up over time. And I think that we need to make this decision around Main Street based on who we want to be and what we want our downtown to be. Rather than be so nervous about future problems that we're unwilling to do the things that our community overwhelmingly wants us to do. I mentioned I'm not in favor of taking the restaurants out of the street way yet. But if we do, interim city manager Linhardt, would the businesses be able to occupy the entire sidewalk without concern about ADA since there would be an entire street for people to walk in?
I don't believe so, because I believe it would still be a challenge to access the businesses along the sidewalk. But it's certainly something that we could look into.
Okay, but it would be, I guess, look into it. Because obviously, I don't think the businesses are going to put tables in front of their ingress and egress. Like, they're going to want to make sure people can still get in there. I just, in terms of just moving from one business to another on the sidewalk, if there's a street right there, I don't see, but follow up on that, please. And if we, if we do go that direction, don't we have a couple of large tents in our parks department? That was abrupt, Director Stroop. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. Yes, we do have some tents. We do not have a large tent, however. That actually broke down over COVID after an event. We had someone damage it, unfortunately. But that is in the budget for the Friday Night Market. And so that is something that we will be purchasing.
Okay, you know, we have a bunch of picnic tables that are out there now. And on Sunday, there were quite a few people sitting at those. If we do take the, you know, private access out of the street, I would love to see us, you know, get a tent, put it up, put those seats out and the table, and still let people be able to eat and enjoy the street. The one other thing I wanted to touch base on with the equity issue, Councilmember Manke brought up that, you know, those aren't cheap restaurants to eat at. You know, a public town square, pedestrianized street, a fun place to be, is a place that people can go without having to pay anything. They can pack a lunch and go hang out and enjoy the scene. And on Sunday, it was a cool scene, like a bunch of people riding by on bikes, like hanging out with their kids, throwing a ball around. So I do think as we have this conversation and we talk about that, you don't have to go to be a customer at the restaurant to enjoy the space. And that's all I've got. Deputy Mayor.
I put my hand out and unmute. So you all got a preview of the motion. I thought to time constrain it so that we won't say it's an indefinite proposal, but something to give us enough time to get the information, given this new, a lot of misinformation that we have. Just give us some time to gather information as things pick up at post-pandemic, assuming the pandemic is indeed ending, so that we can get that data, you know, post-pandemic reality that we live in right now. So my motion is I move to extend the temporary closure of Main Street until March 31st, 2024. So that's two years, to conduct a pilot program to study the impacts on residents, visitors, businesses, and other community stakeholders. But part of this closure would include incorporating the discussion we had around flex zones, ADA accessibility, drop-off zones, and Fourth of July Parade. Parades, since this is going to be a two-year.
Councilmember Alderks.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion on the table from the Deputy Mayor and a second from Councilmember Alderks. And I'm not going to try to repeat all that. But it's on video, so we've got it. City Clerk?
Sorry, I was going to say I can send it to, since chat is open, I can just send it directly to you, Mayor, and or City Clerk. I don't know what the procedure is, so you'll have it.
Just, why don't you just say the motion out loud without the color?
Okay. I move to extend the temporary closure of Main Street until March 31st, 2024, to conduct a pilot program to study the impacts on residents, visitors, businesses, and other community stakeholders.
All right. Councilmember Alderks.
So I can second it now?
I think we need to second it again.
Oh, okay, second.
Perfect. We have that motion on the floor. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
No.
Councilmember Manke?
No.
Councilmember Dorr?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes five to two with Councilmembers McNeil and Manke descending.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Agenda Bill 22042, King County, 2021 Countywide Planning Policies Ratification. And I guess we have Community Development Director Michael Cotterman and Senior Planner Nathan Lamb here to talk about this Agenda Bill.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I can't quite tell. Did I unmute myself?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we're, tonight, we're talking about the countywide planning policies for King County and ratification process for those. Before I turn it over to Senior Planner Lamb, I just wanted to pick up on Councilmember Dorr's question earlier about the comprehensive plan during Shannon's DEI presentation. I appreciate you raising that issue because I think it's very important. And I wanted to let you and the council know that that is something that we are working on as part of the comp plan update. Social justice, racial equity, and environmental justice are all part of the scope that we're working on for the comprehensive plan update. That's one of the primary reasons that I reclassified a position to have a public engagement specialist that could work specifically on those issues as far as our engagement on the comp plan. It also goes along very closely with, I'm stealing a little bit of Nathan's thunder here, with some of the requirements that are in, some of the policies, I should say, that are in the countywide planning policies for both King and Snohomish Counties as well as Vision 2050. So those are things that are already coming into our discussion and our scoping for the comprehensive plan update. And we'll talk more about that at our April 12th study session with the council when we talk about scoping for the comp plan. We're also continuing to presume at this point that we're moving forward on the climate requirements that you had proposed in the legislation, Councilmember Dorr. That's been our presumption all along, that it would pass. And surprised and shocked, as I'm sure you and a lot of others were as well, that it did not pass. But based on the discussions that we've had with the council so far, particularly in the context of the docket for this year and the preliminary scoping that we've done, we're continuing to move forward with the expectation that the council will want us to include that in the scoping for the comp plan as well as the middle housing and ADU's, ADU policies that we've also discussed and that were part of some of the legislation that was proposed in this last session. So having said that, and having now stolen some of Nathan's thunder, this is, this item tonight, this is not a requirement for the council to take action, but because of the importance of the countywide planning policies and because this is part of the process that is available to the city council, we wanted to bring this information to you. Some of it is information you've heard before. But Nathan is also going to talk about some of the key items that are in the countywide planning policies and to give the council the opportunity, if you so wish, to take specific action to ratify these policies. So with that, I'll turn it over to Senior Planner Lamb.
And thank you, Director Cotterman, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Nice to see you all again. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, pull up the presentation for this evening. All right. So as Director Cotterman mentioned, we have before you tonight the 2021 King County Countywide Planning Policies, or CPPs, as they're also known. And this was a major effort spanning from 2019 and mostly 2020 up into 2021 on a interjurisdictional level with King County leading the way and leading the effort. We do have a couple notes for you tonight before we get into the slide deck. So there's not really, well, there is no opportunity for amendments to the CPPs. They're adopted unanimously by the King County Council. So this will just be an overview. And we'll talk a little bit about how that happened and what that means and the timeline that we're currently on for ratification. And the other thing is, this is strictly for King County. This doesn't have anything to do with the Snohomish County planning policies. And as you know, we're blessed by, you know, having to use two frameworks for our countywide planning policies for both counties. Snohomish County has a separate but similar process to the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee that makes a recommendation to Snohomish County Council. So with that, we'll dive into it. So your policy consideration is ratification. We have a recommended motion for you at the end of the slide deck. And hopefully, you'll support an affirmative vote for supporting the CPPs. We do have a deadline of April 6th that we're on. And either you could take no action, or you could take an affirmative vote. But April 6th is the deadline to do those things. So just generally, what are CPPs for a review? As per Growth Management Act, RCWs, they're written policy statements that essentially just build a framework that counties and, excuse me, that jurisdictions within the county use for their comprehensive planning. They're, they're not mandates. They're, they're really just frameworks. The Growth Management Act does require that we're consistent, but they're not like legislative mandates. And so as long as we use those frameworks for our periodic update coming up, we'll be okay. And we can, you know, tailor them to our local vision for planning in our city. So here's the timeline I mentioned, 2012, and this was in your AB. 2012 was the last time they were updated. They largely built on Vision 2040. In 2020, the major effort was undertaken by the interjurisdictional team through the King County Growth Management Planning Council. It's just made up of electeds and staff across the county. And they had some public engagement workshops, and they put a public review draft out for the amendments that they proposed, got feedback, incorporated it. And mid-last year, the amendments were, had it got an official recommendation to King County Council, they adopted it late last year, and that triggered the 90-day ratification process. And that leads us to this April 6th deadline that we have after the CPPs were transmitted to all of the jurisdictions. And before we talk about the updates, just talk about the context and parameters that the interjurisdictional team and committees used to form the policy or make the amendments to the policies. They used 2012 CPPs as a starting point, incorporating the framework from Vision 2040 in those. They incorporated new regional policies, legislative changes. And one of the focus areas was creating actionable directions for jurisdictions to use in their comprehensive plan updates. So instead of just vague language or policy language, something that, um, we could take and, and tailor, as I mentioned earlier, for our own comprehensive plans. Uh, the last two here that we have highlighted are centering social equity and health, and then, uh, the 2044 growth targets, which we use as a, uh, land base to inform our, uh, the land use decisions, uh, in terms of creating capacity uh, for growth in, uh, our city. So this slides should look familiar to you. We're gonna start by focusing on the, uh, growth targets. We brought this to you in November of last year when the, uh, growth targets were being adopted. The, our numbers have not changed, and we want to focus on this top, uh, table here. Um, so we have our 2044 targets. It's a 20, uh, year planning horizon. And the Buildable Lands Report preceded, uh, those, uh, targets that were adopted. And we learned on this deficit and surplus line that we actually have, um, created enough capacity and then some with our zoning and our downtown subarea plan, uh, to accommodate growth to 2044 for housing. Uh, but we have a slight deficit for, uh, creating jobs. Uh, and it's important to keep in mind, this is a 20-year planning horizon, so this deficit is minimal and certainly manageable because we have 20 years to create the capacity for that. It was, um, we had some deficits in, on the Snohomish County side as well, uh, but those were minimal and, uh, manageable. And, uh, so we also learned last year, just for fun, quick facts, uh, about our, uh, population. The Office of Financial Management through the, uh, Department of Commerce uh, gives us our, uh, populate, our population estimates for the year. And last year, uh, the King County side had about almost 29,000 people, uh, and on the Snohomish County side, there was almost 20,000 people. We still haven't broke 50,000 yet, uh, but it's about a 50, uh, 60, 40 split. And that's reflected also in, uh, sort of the land area and acreage on both on the, either side of the county lines, um, about a 60, 40 split with, with, um, more of the, our land area in King County for right now. Uh, so moving on to, uh, centering social equity and health and, um, integrating those into the policy. So Vision 2040 really took a triple bottom line sustainability approach to, uh, their framework. And Vision 2050 really changed that to applying an equity lens and an equity analysis. Uh, those were guided by database measures of equity and, uh, uh, community engagement. And so, um, the lens that was, that was applied, uh, across the chapters, um, uh, encourage overall a sense of, of, we're used to create a comprehensive pro-equity treatment, uh, to the, to the update of all of the chapters. The baseline that they started with was using the King County Equity Impact Review Tool and Social Justice Strategic Plan, uh, for their, for the starting point for a framework. And, uh, overall, now the CPPs affect process, distributional, cross-generational, and reparative equity in different measures depending on the focus of the policy. Uh, the analysis portion, so there's the lens portion and analysis portion. Analysis focused on transportation, land use, public service provision, environment, housing, and economic policy. And so the major themes that came out of those CPPs that we're gonna be looking to, uh, apply to, uh, our periodic update it are, um, increasing equitable access to opportunity, preventing and mitigating displacement, lifting and sharing burdens, achieving health equity, and engaging with, uh, our. The housing chapter of the CPPs received the most updates and new policies. Uh, it redefines a countywide need. Uh, more importantly, it requires that we do an inventory, uh, and analysis of our housing needs. And on the King County side, we'll be doing that in Snohomish County too, on that side. Uh, and then also important to highlight here is there's some monitoring and accountability, uh, uh, policies, uh, in that chapter. Per this, uh, housing affordability, there, excuse me, affordable housing dashboard that is live right now on the King County website uh, through their Affordable Housing Committee, and it's got some, uh, equity, um, determinants of equity, and this is just an infographic, uh, that you see on the slide pool from their website. So the idea is at any point in time, anybody can access this information that shows, you know, um, how we're doing and how, how well or, um, or not we're doing at incorporating those policies. The environment chapter focuses on protecting the nat- natural environment, um, uh, and creating, uh, work to, uh, policies that ensure that neighborhoods in King County have access to clean air, land, uh, water, and, and acknowledge that access to healthy environments hasn't always been equitably distributed. So that's that environmental justice piece that Director Cotterman mentioned earlier that we're, um, certainly gonna be, um, uh, applying to our, our own analysis for our comp plan update. In the development patterns chapter, this is, uh, uh, based off of Vision 2050's Regional Growth Strategy, directing growth for population and jobs into centers and, uh, high-capacity transit station areas. Um, we do have those new growth targets that we saw. And if you'll recall, last year, we applied to make our downtown, uh, subarea a, a candidate, uh, countywide growth center. We did, uh, we were nominated, and so we've got some more work to do, analysis to do for our, during our, uh, comprehensive plan update, uh, to be formally recognized as a countywide growth center. Uh, so that's gonna be another component of the update. Go on to these last few slides here. The economy chapter essentially is implementing the regional economic strategy. Uh, it has policies that, uh, are aimed at advancing the business interest of BIPOC and immigrant refugee and marginalized communities. Our last slide here, uh, for the transportation and public facilities chapter is, uh, mainly concerned with managing growth and mobility. And the spirit is equitable provision, uh, uh, public services, uh, across King County. And so those are, those are sort of the high-level updates to, to the new policies and the amendments to the existing policies. We're gonna be discussing these at, at length, you know, the, um, during scoping and when we're working on the periodic update. So, um, with that, before we go to questions, our recommended action, uh, for this evening is a motion to ratify, uh, the
2021 King County CPPs. And with that, uh, we'll take questions if you have any. Councilmember Zornz?
Quick question. Thank you for the presentation. Um, it was, it was, uh, clear and concise, and we booked right through it. I do have a question about, uh, nominating us as a growth center countywide. Is that for making us a receiving uh, place for TD, TDRs or what, 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 what is? What happens when you're nominated, when you become a regional, uh, uh, growth center recognized in, in the county?
Yeah, I should have mentioned there's some criteria that, um, so as part of their, uh, designation of centers update in King County, there's, uh, um, some criteria that we need to meet, and that'll be the analysis that we're doing for the update. The TDR question is that, I had, we, I hadn't thought of that angle, and I'm not really familiar with the King County, uh, TDR, uh, countywide program as much as the Snohomish, uh, county side. And so I would, I would think that, um, makes us eligible, although, although I don't know, um, perhaps Director Cotterman knows. But, um, that's certainly in line with, um, some of the policy work that we're working on with, uh, Planning Commission right now, um, for TDR in Canyon Park, although that's in Snohomish County, is maybe at some point, um, the idea of, um, directing growth, um, through TDRs in, into some of those higher-capacity, higher-density areas. So hopefully that answers your question.
Uh, it, it, it does. It sounds like we're going to have, uh, uh, opportunities for the community to weigh in on, weigh in on it if we move that direction. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Dour?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, thank you, Nathan, for a very concise presentation. Um, I had a, a few questions. So, um, when it comes time to do the, you know, environmental justice, are, do you, do you have access to the health disparities map, maps, and do you know about it? In order to use that as a tool?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question. I, I must have looked at that last year, but we're, um, and as part of the scoping, um, work that we're doing right now, um, among staff is trying to gather all of those tools. We've met with, um, uh, PSRC and, and asked them, you know, what tools are at our disposal, uh, just like the King County ones. And, um, we did hear back from somebody at the county who gave us a, a list, um, that we do plan to apply, and, and that was one of them. So, um, yep, so that'll, that'll certainly, uh, be incorporated into the process.
Perfect. And then the other question I had was, what are our, um, thoughts around climate change resiliency? Do, are, are, I mean, I know you talked about incorporating the 1099, um, but we, and some of that was mentioned in this presentation, but, uh, you know, a big portion of it is the resiliency aspect where, you know, we're not building in, um, wetland areas, and we're not building where there are landslide-prone areas and that sort of thing. Is that some, something that we'll be doing differently with this update?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a stab at that. Um, I know there's some work that we're getting started to do, um, as part of our, as part of, uh, with our shorelines board, and I think some of, um, the work that they'll be doing encompasses some of those topics that you brought up. And besides that, I know there's some synergy in, in staff, among staff, uh, with Public Works in our department for urban, um, urban heat island effect. Um, and so that's the only thing, um, that we've talked about. But again, we've, we've only just begun scoping. And, um, as Director Cotterman mentioned, we're certainly, you know, those, those elements of, um, the, the climate change and resiliency, um, legislation that didn't quite make it. We was still planning to, uh, incorporate those. So I'll let him add on to that if I missed anything.
No, I think you've, I think you've pretty well covered it. I, I, the only thing I would add is that we'll be talking in more detail about all of this on April 12th when we come to the council with a study session about the scoping. And the council will have an opportunity then as, as well as, uh, in, uh, in the future as we get into more detailed scoping as to how far you want us to go, uh, in the comp plan in terms of not only resiliency and climate change, but, um, uh, you know, all of the other elements that we'll be looking at in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, um, great. Yeah, I, I guess I was curious. I'm also curious, like, um, I know that there's, there's already sort of a FEMA-driven, um, resiliency. Requirement and, uh, just wondered, we don't really talk about it in the city, but I wondered if, how, how much overlap. I know there's some overlap, and I didn't know timing-wise if there's, um, uh, some synergy in terms of like, just amounts of staff time required to, to do that.
And I'm not familiar with all of the FEMA requirements, but I know we, we just updated our, uh, our FEMA maps and, uh, our standards around FEMA as far as stormwater uh, within the last couple of years. Uh, in fact, some of the work that the shorelines board is gonna be doing is, is bringing that up to date with, um, the, the changes that we made uh, that we were required to make under the FEMA, uh, program as well. So I think we're looking at all of those different sources. We have a lot of different, um, components and, and directives that are coming from state and federal and regional, um, bodies that we have to consider as we work through this. So that's just another one that we're looking at.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Great presentation.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, mayor, and, uh, thank you, Nathan. This is awesome. Uh, I, I, I love this, so you'll know where I'm gonna go with that vote. I just had a couple of questions. I know you clarified, uh, uh, Director Cotterman, you clarified that this is not, there's no scoping. The, the scope of this discussion is should we move forward or not with this? So, but I have a couple of clarification questions I have. In one of the slides you had, Nathan, uh, at the beginning, I can't remember the title, but it was, um, uh, it's about showing the 2044 projections. And you were showing the difference between, you know, existing and, and projected. Yes, this one. Can you just, uh, very quickly explain? Because it, the, the, the top table, I understand. The bottom table, I don't understand because the second row is greater than the first row, but you added, I don't understand the how, what, what's the implication of the second table against the first table? Like, what's the relationship?
Yep, yeah, um, so the, with respect to the bottom table, so I think what we were just trying to do is show where we would end up with those, uh, with those, uh, targets. So, uh, for King County, they got started on their buildable, um, lands work, um, earlier than, than Snohomish County did, and, and they were using, um, some earlier data, and that's why we've got the year 2018 here. But that's, that's where we were at with those, the number of housing units that were counted and jobs that were counted. And so we're just simply adding, um, our 24, 2044 targets to those, and you get your total to 2044. Can work on revising that, um, because it's not very intuitive. But yeah, so those, those are the numbers that, that we would be at with our growth targets.
And with, uh, 2018 being four years ago, and there has been quite a bit of building, how are we tracking against these numbers? Or is that at a later stage, we'll have a discussion around, around that?
Yeah, uh, yeah, that, that's certainly one snapshot in time, but, um, certainly for the analysis that we'll be doing for the, the periodic plan, uh, we'll be, um, relying on some of the census data that was, um, uh, and that was released as well as some of the OFM data that we rely on for, uh, uh, for these counts. And so, yeah, we'll have, we'll have a much more accurate, um, snapshot of, of where we're currently at. And then that'll help us make a more informed decision about, you know, the targets that we have to accommodate.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, the final question on this particular site or this particular discussion, uh, topic is, uh, this is only King County. We're gonna have to go through a similar exercise with Snohomish County?
Uh, theirs doesn't require, uh, or doesn't have a ratification process. It just, um, the Snohomish County tomorrow steering committee makes a recommendation, um, based on the amendments that were made, uh, by its, uh, inner jurisdictional staff, and the county council, uh, basically adopts it, and, and that's, that's it. So, uh, we, but it, in terms of, um, incorporating their CPPs, that's, we're gonna have to uh, all sit down together and sort through those and, um, you have, you know, how to use both of these frameworks for, for our policy. So we'll, we'll, we'll be bringing that at some point.
And, uh, the first question I had actually, which I didn't ask, and as I was going through the, the, the material before this meeting. And, uh, the question is like, what's the implication? Do we, is it an all or nothing type thing? Like, if we afford to ratify it now, do we have to take every single line item in this, in this, uh, plan, in the policy?
Yeah, it's a fair question because there's, so that we've got the, the GMA, the, and mandates and recent legislation. Those, those are mandates, but the CPPs really are just, um, for creating a framework for us and a, and a baseline for us to start with our own policy. And so that's what will most likely be, um, one component of what we'll be using to frame the discussion, uh, that we have through our public engagement and with Planning Commission and with council about how to tailor our, our own policy.
Okay, thank you. So it's a framework. It's not necessarily a mandate.
Yep, we, we do have to be consistent, but, um, like, line item by, you know, policy by policy. We don't have to, you know, a, adopt, so to speak, um, you know, each, each and every one of those.
Um, yeah, that makes sense. Uh, and, uh, the, the final question I had was, uh, in the material, and I didn't put in your presentation, but in the, the material here, we had a table that showed, it's called H1, so King County Affordable Housing Need.
Yep.
Could have some snapshot of it, but, uh, this one was in the, the view was a table. And it shows a King County view, but it doesn't show a Baku view. Do we have any idea what the Baku view looks like?
Yeah, um, I wanna say that that's in an, it's in an appendix, I believe, of the, uh, the CPPs. And I'm, I, I'm not remembering which appendix it's, it's in, but it was, um, uh, a major effort of the Affordable Housing Committee for King County. Um, and some of And some of the, some of the data is, I think the data is from 2017, but they've, they had started that analysis quite some time ago. But again, it's just, you know, serving as a baseline and it's so showing, you know, the shares of the income levels and the distributions of the, the countywide need at this point. And so that'll be yet another thing that we're incorporating and, you know, when we have to do our inventory and housing needs analysis for the housing element of the comp plan. So we'll, we'll be able to show, you know, Bothell's portion or responsibility of, of that countywide need, so to speak.
Okay, cool. And you answered my second, my follow up question on this H4, conduct an inventory or analysis in each jurisdiction. So that's going to be part of the comp plan, you know, exercise, I guess.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate the time. I, I wanted just to make a comment. There was a section about environment and we talked about climate change and all that. One of the policies says environment, the environment chapter guides cities in King County in assessing and updating their comprehensive plans to protect the natural environment and mitigate existing future climate change and other environmental impacts. The changes in the environmental chapter relate to climate change, access to parks and open space and urban, for urban residents and environmental justice. Facilitating modes of travel other than single occupancy vehicles, including transit. This is all related to the previous discussion we had on Main Street and and making an open space and lot EFG. You know, there's a lot of things that by doing some of the things we have, we just talked about that tonight will really help us to accomplish some of those goals that, you know, if council decides today to ratify this. It's cool. Thank you.
And if I could just clarify something, I'm, I'm not sure I inferred something from what the deputy mayor just said about if we choose to ratify these. So the policies apply to the city, whether the city ratifies them or not. Just, just to be clear about that.
So what are we doing now tonight? And what's the motion for?
The, the motion is whether the city wants to weigh in and in ratification. So the way that the system is set up in King County is the, the Growth Management Planning Council makes a recommendation to the county council. The county council then takes action on behalf of the unincorporated area to, to approve those. And then it goes out to all of the cities to ratify, and it has to be approved by 30% of the cities representing 70% of the population. So if, and if the cities take no action, then it's, they're deemed to have ratified it. So this is an opportunity for the city to take an affirmative action to ratify. In which case it'll get recorded with, with the, the county that the city of Bothell has voted to ratify these CPPs. If you take no action, Bothell will still be considered to have ratified them. If you don't want to ratify them, then you could take a vote to not ratify, and that would also then go to the county. It's just part of the process that has been set up in King County.
But they're still accountable to those policies.
If they are, if they are ratified, yes.
But if they're ratified, we're still accountable to the policies you said earlier.
If, well, if they're, if they are ratified by 30% of the jurisdictions representing 70% of the population, then yes, all the jurisdictions within King County are subject to those countywide policies.
Okay, thank you.
There's a long history as to how that came about, but that's, that's the process that's been set up.
And some member Alderks.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I motion to move the recommended action.
Councilmember Dure.
Second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Orange.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Councilmember Manke.
Yes.
Councilmember Dure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, thank you, Director Cotterman, Senior Planner Lamb. All right, let's take five. I showed 1017 on this computer. Let's come back at 1022.
Recording stopped.
Consideration of Board and Commission Appointments. City Clerk, you are going to present and lead us through this process or?
Or?
Oh.
Or Deputy City Clerk. I apologize, Mayor. Laura stepped away for the break. I thought you said 1022 and it's now 1020. So she will be here shortly. Unless you wanted me to get started for?
We can wait. It's fine. I, I was actually just thinking I need to sync this clock up with my watch so that like when I'm somewhere else, I know what time it is. Like, I feel like we should just be like five minutes from whatever your clock says.
Gotcha. I'd like to know why our city computers are not on universal time.
I have no idea.
Very different.
Robin can do this if she wants. All right, I'm going to start the recording.
Recording in progress.
All right, welcome back. We're moving on to Agenda Bill 22043, Consideration of Board and Commission Appointments. Clerk Hathaway is going to present and lead us through this process.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. As you know, March 8th, we interviewed applicants, or council interviewed applicants for the various positions on for board and commissions. And tonight we're going to vote for, to fill those vacancies. So Protocol Manual 2.08 outlines the process for casting the votes saying that council will use written ballots. And because of the virtual nature of this meeting, we are going to use the chat function here in Zoom. So when I call your name, I ask that you chat to just me, use the chat function and chat your votes just to me. We're going to start with the easy ones and get to the ones that we have more applicants for. And we'll go as many rounds as we need to, to get all appointments done. And in order to be appointed, the applicant must receive a majority vote of the council members present. And again, we will go as many rounds as we need to. And the chat reports will be printed and retained as part of the record for our protocol manual. The clerk's office will assign the position numbers and notify each applicant whether they were appointed or not. And we did have one opening on Landmark Preservation Board. We did not receive any applications for that. However, council may choose to appoint another applicant to another board and commission if they so choose. And the last thing I want to say is that we did the applicant for the youth position on the Arts Commission is the sister of the current youth commissioner on the arts. I talked to Paul Byrne about that. The Bothell municipal code does not address that. The Protocol Manual does state that council will not appoint relatives. However, it is your Protocol Manual and you could amend that if you wanted to and wanted to appoint. If not, we would need direction if we want to go back out. And with that, are there any questions before we begin?
Councilmember Dure.
So I just want to clarify. So two sisters would be sitting on the council. It's not one's replacing the other.
No, two sisters would be sitting, yeah.
And, and there were no other applicants? Okay, I didn't, I didn't correct. So after I spent four hours this afternoon, thanks.
Any, any other questions before we begin? All right. So I'm going to, we're going to start with the library board. I'm going to be calling council members in alphabetical, alphabetically. And so I'm going to call on Councilmember Alderks to enter her two votes for the library board via the chat, just to me, please.
I apologize for the delay.
That's okay. Next, we're going to call on Deputy Mayor Al Cabra. Thank you. Next, we're going to call on Deputy Councilmember Dure. So the other applicant was Councilmember Dure asked a question. The other applicant, we had two applicants for library board. One was Sarah Jomshidi and Jessica Chung was the other one. And Sarah was unable to make the interviews. So can you? Thank you. Next is Councilmember Manke. Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. Mayor Thompson. And Councilmembers Orange. Okay, thank you very much. We have appointed Sarah Jomshidi and Jessica Chung to the library board. And I'm not going to say which one's full and which one's partial and get that done, but they've been appointed. And that was Sarah received seven votes and Jessica Chung received six votes. We had one write in for Tony Anders. So that's that one. Next, we're going to go to Lodging Tax Advisory Commission. And this one, we want you to vote for two. So we're going to call on Councilmember Alderks. Deputy Mayor Al Cabra. Thank you, Councilmember Dure. Next is Councilmember Manke. Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Actually, the, I got a question on Sarah or Laura, I mean Nancy. Actually, yeah, Sarah is a revenue, so.
It looks like we have one revenue and one hotel, so we need to vote for one revenue and one hotel, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't see your vote. I believe that's, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Doerr.
So you know, I watched the video today, but I just took the names down as I heard them, which was not easy to always get. It would be super helpful if there was a visual of like people's names and how to spell them. I don't know if that's asking too much at this point, but maybe just in chat to say who the, who the people were, because I just by ear, you know, was trying to figure out what their names were.
You want us to display the names of like the matrix for each one? Yeah, we could probably do that if you give us just a minute. Councilmember Alderks, do you have a question?
Or you could just?
I was just gonna say that one of the ways that I helped, like, I had the same question and the same desire, and so I pulled up the packet from last week and found the, found the matrix. And so I don't know, can we share files and chat? Anyway, it's, we do have access to the text if you, if you can pull it up.
Yeah, Councilmember Doerr, I just emailed you a link to the packet from last week, so it'll be right at the top of your inbox.
Delay, so it's not coming through.
Do you want us to share that?
Or if you could just put it in the chat to everyone, like, who, you know, names. If someone could do that, that would be super helpful. Because I didn't always catch last names and whatnot, so. And I I'm not sure how to spell certain names either, to be honest. My apologies.
Okay, Robin just sent that, the names of the three.
Oh, okay.
And so now we're, now I'm, I'm calling on Councilmember Zornz for her LTAC votes. Okay. Just a minute here, please. I'm sorry, just give me one moment, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry about that. It looks like that would be Nancy Pippenich received seven votes and Sarah Webb received four votes, so she's been appointed. So that is, okay, do you, do you want to know who vote? Well, who voted, it doesn't matter, but we've got four. So now we're gonna move on to the Arts Commission. And again, this one, you're voting for four, but one of those has to be a Youth Commission member. So Robin's gonna type those names real quick for you, and then we'll go from there.
City Clerk, quick question. Did you say, you say it was Nancy and Laura, or Nancy and Sarah?
Sarah. Sarah Webb received four votes. Laura Rizer received three votes.
Nancy and Sarah are both revenue. I believe it had to be one revenue, one hotelier.
That, that is correct, yeah. Actually, you're, you're correct, Councilmember Menke. So we need to go back. Let's do that again. We do need one revenue and one, one, Sarah is a revenue, so we need one revenue, one hotel. So I'm gonna, while Robin's typing those names, I'm gonna go back and ask for a vote. Councilmember Alderks, this is for LTAC. Thank you, Councilmember Al Cabra. Thank you, Councilmember Doerr. Thank you, Councilmember Menke. Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Zornz. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. You're correct on that, Mayor. Councilmember Menke, so appointed to LTAC is Laura Rizer, Rizer, and Nancy Pippenich each received seven votes. Okay. We're almost ready to start our voting on the Arts Commission. Okay, Robin just sent it. So I'll give you a chance, a minute to read those, and I'm gonna call for votes. Again, we're voting for four. One needs to be our youth position. So Councilmember Alderks. Thank you, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Al Cabra. Okay, sorry, sorry, it's like broke up halfway through, and I'm like, what's, I don't understand your full chat. Okay. Okay, thank you. Next is Councilmember Doerr. Thank you, Councilmember Menke. Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Thank you, and Councilmember Zornz. Thank you. All right, this is what we've got. Sharma, Sharma Parag received five votes. Kelly Atkinson received four votes, Jill Madison received six votes, and Nia Chang received seven votes. We are, we are good. We are moving on now to the Parks and Recreation Board, and Robin, a minute, just gonna type those names in for everybody. And this one, we're gonna be voting for three.
Does anybody else do a little happy dance when we, like, all, when we agree on the first try?
I do.
One round of voting?
All right, so Robin just sent over those names. And if we're ready, I'm gonna start with Councilmember Alderks. That's fine. Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Al Cabra. Thank you, Councilmember Doerr. Thank you, Councilmember Menke. Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Thank you, Councilmember Zornz. Okay. We have five votes for Kalish Mendel, four votes for Sheila Bressi, I hope I said that right, and six votes for Adam Stacy. So those is that, and we will move on to I'm gonna do landmark last. And move on to planning permission. There's a lot, so give me a minute. Give Robin a minute to type in.
Okay, they're not perfect this time, so it is fast, I could.
Okay, there's your names. We'll start with Councilmember Alderks. And this time, we're voting for three.
Which Amanda? There's two Amandas.
Which Amanda? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's two Amandas, so please, if you're voting for an Amanda, please put maybe the first initial, or first name and last initial, and then we'll help us. And, okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Al Cabra. Thank you. Councilmember Doerr. Thank you, Councilmember Menke. Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Thank you, and Councilmember Zornz. Okay, thank you, just a second. All right, what we've got is Kevin Kiernan been reappointed, Tony Anders has been appointed, and Amanda Dodd has been reappointed to position two. And last but not least, we're gonna do Landmark Preservation Board. Again, this one, we did not have any applicants for that. However, we did have one person on another board that put that as their secondary choice, and then if council wants to take anybody else and nominate anybody else who applied for one of the other boards, we can do that now. Councilmember Doerr?
I somehow missed who it was that had their second as the landmark board.
Andrew Nelson.
Oh, okay.
Andrew Nelson.
Andrew Nelson, yeah, Andrew Nelson was the one who had it as his second choice. Andrew Nelson, yeah, Andrew Nelson was the one who had it as his second choice.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, and so we only have one opening right now on that, so. Thank you, Councilmember Alcabra. Thank you, Councilmember Doer. Thank you, Councilmember Menke. Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Thank you, and Councilmember Zorn. Okay, Andrew Nelson received five votes. So, thank you, that was it, round one for everything. It would be accepted in my mistake on LTAC, I apologize for that, but yeah. We are appointed, and we will, Clerk's Office will notify all applicants tomorrow and Thursday regarding their appointments. And that is all I have, and we're going to disable the chat now. Thank you.
I feel like this gets harder every year because the applicants just keep getting better and better. Like, it is amazing how much talent we have, and I wish we had more boards to put these people on sometimes. All right, next up on, oh, Councilmember Alderks.
To your point, Mayor, I was just wondering, is there some kind of mechanism to reach out to those who applied who did not get appointed? And offer them or invite them for further community engagement opportunities? Because they're, like, like the mayor said, there's just a lot of knowledge, wisdom, insight that could be gained from their continued participation. And I don't want them to be discouraged from contributing.
You have all of their resumes. Councilmember Doer.
I was just going to say, I typically write thank you notes to everyone who applied. Encouraging them to stay engaged.
You're so good at this. Councilmember Zorn. You're muted.
Okay, fine, two buttons to push. I copycated from Councilmember Doer when I first came on board. And I've been, I'm getting writer's cramp doing the same thing. And I had a conversation with our interim city manager about, you know, how could we redirect the, direct folks and brainstorming. I think we could encourage them both here and in follow-up to contact our volunteer coordinator for ways to participate and help out with the city. And then to Councilmember Menke's point, we got, we got fresh stock for creating some, some ad hoc committees. So lots, lots, lots of ideas. They may regret putting their name in the hopper.
If I could just add one more thing that I forgot to say, we need a, I need a motion to. I could get that.
Councilmember Doer.
I remove Laura's recommended action.
Councilmember McNeil. All right, I've got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Doer, and a second by Councilmember McNeil for Laura's recommended action.
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zorn.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Yes.
Passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk. Next up is Council Conversations. These usually don't last long at 11:00 PM, but Councilmember Alderks.
I was going to start off by saying that time changes are hard. And maybe we're all a little uncomfortable as a result. And two more time changes, and it will take another act of Congress before we ever have to do that again. So whether you are happy about permanent daylight savings time or not, there's two more time changes, and we're done with this. And the public health benefits will be well enjoyed because we will have fewer car accidents in the week after time changes. We will have fewer strokes and heart attacks. So I'm just glad that a decision was made to keep one time. Thank you.
Hard same. Councilmember Doer.
Uh, well, I was really intrigued by Councilmember Menke's suggestion. And I wanted to put out there as a possible ad hoc committee, a Friday Night Market Committee. Because I think we could use all the help we can get so that it doesn't all, you know, weigh on staff. So just a thought, because I think it's going to take a lot of hands and a lot of energy and time and hard work to make it successful. And so just something maybe to think about. I don't, when did, when did staff say they would be bringing it back for discussion? Like, I can't remember. Anyone?
I don't remember.
Yeah, I just, hopefully, it's soonish.
Councilmember Alderks.
My understanding is that there isn't a time to bring it back yet until Councilmember Menke submits the paperwork, and then it will end up on an agenda. Which, sorry that you have, you know, busy work to do, but it's coming. And if I can, if I may, another ad hoc committee that I have heard possibly forming. And I'd also like to recognize the Radar Advisory Board. They are an ad hoc committee of the city, and they have begun meeting. And I'm hearing really positive things from people participating in that. So even though it's not necessarily listed as a board, and just like the DEI Advisory Group is not listed as a board or commission, we do have these additional ad hoc committees. And so I second Councilmember Doer's suggestion of a Friday Night Market ad hoc committee. And I've also heard mention of a Chief's Equity Council that the, the Chief of Police is seeking to convene as a, as a form of community oversight of the Police Department. And that is something that I've heard our consultant Shannon Kelly Ray is advising on. Just throw that out there.
I'm gonna suggest we all say good night, because we're all going to see each other's sweet faces in a couple days. And a couple days after that. Y'all all earned a good night's rest.
Bye, everyone. It's fun. I'll see y'all on Thursday.
Night.